All right, let's go. All right, welcome everybody. Good morning. It is June 23, 2020. This is the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County. We want to welcome everybody who's joining us via Zoom today. This is obviously still amidst the COVID pandemic. We are still participating, social distancing, and our chambers are still closed. Before we get started, though, I want to make sure, a brief comment to all those who are participating either via phone or via Zoom with us, that through our agenda, there are abilities to submit public comment. There is a web address there for everybody to submit that public comment for any item that we have on the agenda. So just with that little caveat, we'll get started. And with that, Mr. Manager, will you lead us in a salute to the facts, sir? Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can we, a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung via telephone. Von Hartung via Zoom.
Here.
Jean Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney David Watzvial via Zoom.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we take public comment this morning, we are going to make adjustments to the agenda. At this time, I'm going to be pulling Item 6 today from the agenda. And that's the only changes I've been making, but I am pulling Item 6 today. So with that, Mr. Manager, we are on to Item 3.
Item 3 is Public Comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, I have on my list quite a few names signed in with voicemails, so if you will take us through public comment, Madam Clerk.
First up via voicemail is James Wayland.
My name is James Wayland. I am submitting comments for the coming Washoe County Board of Commissioners meeting. Washoe County, by consent calendar item. Washoe County, unknown to the County Commission, has effectively franchised out operation of the public Washoe County tennis center for the financial benefit of a single individual. This was quietly enabled by county setup. If you want to know more, ask Jeff Patterson better than asking me. Jeff is quietly overseeing this conversion of the public facility into a private tennis operation. Washoe County, by consent calendar 8.23, February 25, 2020, entered an agreement allowing the Reno Tennis Club, a nonprofit corporation, to operate and retain the Washoe County tennis center. By consent calendar approval, the Reno Tennis Club implemented significant changes. The Reno Tennis Club now effectively operates as a sham nonprofit corporation for the financial benefit of a single person. The tennis professional hired by the Reno Tennis Club also happens to be the Reno Tennis Club Board President. This Board President can now have unrestricted use of public tennis courts for getting deep or serious lessons. As many public courts in as much time as the Reno Tennis Club President chooses to give themselves, this includes hiring staff and using all courts all the time. It gets worse. Washoe County has now in place a blueprint for franchising out operation of county facilities. This includes an approval process and a capital contract and operating example. This is already for replication of franchisee operations at other county facilities, not limited to only recreation facilities. What is the county to do now? Are you going to attempt to limit this one facility financially to benefiting one individual? Are you going to advertise for proposals to other members of the public, county government, same opportunity to operate other county facilities? I expect that many business people would jump at the chance to operate county facilities through. Only these require to annually pay the county $3,000 as provided in county-approved Reno Tennis Club. I envision restaurants, food trucks for a supplement in the economy welcoming the same opportunity to operate county parks and in return operate businesses on site where this potential is only limited to the imagination of the truck or newer. Here's my suggestion, immediately suspend the agreement with the Reno Tennis Club approved February 25, 2020, investigate my comment. Reinvestigate the county's prior policy prohibiting tennis courts and public tennis courts prior to future rule of this agreement and fight public debate. That seriously considers public policy implications of this agreement. I'm available to give you more background information on this topic. If the county thinks this agreement is fine and dandy, I will personally make sure that people in the business community are made aware of this. I will work hard to see that the fine opportunities available here are not limited to one.
Next up, Mr. Chair, is a voicemail from Sandra Troutson.
My name is Sandra Johnson. I'm leaving a general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. This is about the colas, the raises for the employees. The county has done this before and it's unnecessary. People need their raises. They need to be able to pay for things. Are the commissioners getting raises this year? Because if they are, then the employees should get raises this year. Please consider giving Washoe County employees their raises because they need them to support their families. I worked for Washoe County for 34 years and I got through the last time the economy sank and the economy has not sunk. You're getting enough money from the feds, so employees need their raises. This does directly affect my family. My son-in-law works for Washoe County, so I am very strongly saying Washoe County employees need their raises.
Okay.
Next up, Mr. Chair, is a voicemail from Eric Zappi.
Hello, my name is Eric Zappi and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners Meeting on June 23, 2020. I am deeply disappointed in our county managers after hearing that they would break their contract with the WCEA and other bargaining groups by forcefully taking away the 2.5% cost of living adjustment that they agreed to for this upcoming fiscal year. What makes this worse is the county is seeking to take our pay even though the budget would show a net balance of $43 million. That is not counting an additional bailout of $20 million you are receiving for, quote, pandemic response. According to the proposal, you want to suspend the contract due to the pandemic emergency. Common sense, basic math would suggest that if you are receiving a $20 million bailout for pandemic response, this would then cover the $5 million you are seeking to take from the employees. To the county manager specifically, I urge you to change course and honor the contract you entered into. If nothing else, this would show that maybe you care about your employees and appreciate the work we do, but so far this looks to be quite the opposite. What will happen if you continue is it will show that you cannot be trusted. I ask you, is this the image you are striving for? When employees are treated fairly, they like coming to work and give better service to the customer, which for us, the public, your relationship of trust or lack thereof carries over to the public at large. To the county commissioners, I urge you to do what is right and not allow the county to break their contract. Thank you.
Next up is a voicemail from Barbara Arbogast.
Hi, my name is Barbara Arbogast and I am leaving this message in the general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. It's regarding the employees' contract and our budget. And I wanted to voice very strongly that I disagree with taking money from the employees that we have already negotiated in our next contract so that we would start a new cola on July 1, 2020. So I'm just wanting you to know that breaking this contract, that's an undesirable precedent that would make it harder to hire workers for Washoe County in the future. Breaking the contract based on speculation isn't a professional way to handle our challenging circumstances. Money paid to employees is spent by employees and keeps our economy alive. Additionally, many Washoe employees, like myself, are temporarily sole providers for our families, so any kind of cola that we receive would be going towards, you know, two or three members of the county, not just one. Also, in the future, after giving us our cola, you can always provide a furlough for employees and wait to do so until the actual numbers have been released and we know what the actual numbers are for our taxes. They may be better than you think. We didn't know we were going to receive $20 million from federal aid for the COVID-19 crisis. We thought we were going to have to use our money in order to handle the crisis, and since we don't, that money's back in our account, so we should be okay from that standpoint. Additionally, we'll have a lot of natural attrition this fiscal year and next due to retirements, and it might actually make up for the $5 million without having to take our cola away. Just in technology services, we are losing about, I think it's seven people in this fiscal year. So seven people is a lot of salary, especially when one of them is our CIO. So please take retirees into account before asking current employees to give up their colas. Also, we have to negotiate a new contract for the next fiscal year anyway, so keep our contract as it is. Let it play out. Let it do its thing. Find out the actual.
Next is a voicemail from Brandy Ellison.
Hello, my name is Brandy Ellison and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I'm calling because I understand that Washoe County wishes to suspend the WCEA collective bargaining agreements concerning colas and vacation buyout. The WCEA has attempted to negotiate this issue in good faith with the county successfully. My understanding is that on top of the $40 million ending fund balance, there will also be issued an additional $20 million pandemic response amount. I've worked throughout the entire shutdown primarily from home to aid in my department's success in keeping operations going without fail or complaint. I've expended a large amount of my personal funds to purchase equipment I would not have otherwise purchased in order to execute my work properly. As a homeowner and Washoe County resident, I have watched my property taxes, homeowners' insurance, water service, waste removal service, and internet service charges rise significantly in the last few months. As a Washoe County employee, I count on my cola every year to help me maintain a very standard cost of living existence against these rising prices. I do not feel that Washoe County is acting in good faith or understanding the needs of their employees to maintain a basic standard of living. While the county has expectations of me as an employee that I have consistently maintained, I have expectations of Washoe County as my employer. I truly hope you take the concerns of all employees into consideration and the potential impact that my and our colas could have on us and the economic impact it can have. Thank you, Brandy Ellison.
Next up is a voicemail from Todd Kirsten.
My name is Todd Kirsten and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I do not agree with canceling our contract instead of going back bargaining with us like we did when this contract came about, instead of making a cut drive up for canceling your contract. This is not the right way to go about it. Thank you.
Next is a voicemail from Joel Rivera.
Hi, my name is Joel Rivera and I'm leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I am an employee of the county. I just had my one-year anniversary last June 10th. And I'm just calling because it's concerning that you're thinking about foregoing the 2.5% cola increase. It seems like the information that I provide is correct, that we will have a budget surplus of $48 million for the fiscal year 21. I understand these are unprecedented times with a national pandemic, but it seems like there should be no reason to forego the cola, especially if it was negotiated going to the contract. Especially with all of the stimulus spending, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 trillion. I would believe that Washoe County would be able to access some of those funds, and if you're not, and if you have access to those funds, it's concerning that you would not use those to help stimulate the economy. I would prefer the county, I think that this is a great, great organization and all the employees that I have contacted are amazing. They love their jobs. They love working for the county and they do a great job. I think this would be a real detriment to morale if we would not get the cola increase. Just wanted to leave my comments and hopefully we can get this resolved. All right, have a great day.
Next, a voicemail from Brando Harris.
Hello, my name is Brando Harris and I would like this message to be read aloud as general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I'm a caseworker for the Children's Services Department of the Washoe County Human Services Agency. In my role, I have to ensure child safety, being with the parents of these children regularly to ensure the family moving forward and receiving every service necessary to be in school. With COVID-19 pandemic, it's been difficult for me to adjust here, both personally and professionally. Despite this adjustment, I have worked to ensure that every child in my case was attended properly and that their parents and family members are receiving every service available to them. Many of my family and friends were laid off in the pandemic because of their community. As such, I know how fortunate I am to continue working and fulfilling my role as Child Protective Services caseworker. That being said, the pandemic has not decreased my workload or made my work any easier to complete on a daily basis. If anything, the pandemic has increased my workload as I adjusted judging work from home and being out in the field serving families in our community. I understand what the county is proposing is to take away the cola increase they agreed to in the current contract. Although I understand what is the county's position, I don't agree with the county's reasoning in any capacity. How is it fair that the county with $10 million in reserves is attempting to take 2.5% of my hourly wage out of my pocket when my role has increased during these difficult times? How is it fair that the county with its vast resources is attempting to limit my access to resources while I continue to navigate my role while also seeking to cover my family through this crisis in the period? The answer is simple. It's not fair. It's not reasonable. It's not just. Thank you so much.
Next up is Kate Salim.
My name is Kate Salim and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I've worked for Washoe County for over 20 years, currently in the Elections Department overseeing mail-in ballots. I am calling to oppose the proposal to suspend the collective bargaining agreement and stop the 2.5% cost of living allowance and vacation buyout going into effect on July 1st and to stop harming Washoe County employees in this way. Since the beginning of the pandemic, I worked consistently to serve the voters of Washoe County, often working 60-plus hours a week, taking over the job for another worker who quit in April and was unable to fill that role due to budget cuts and a hiring freeze. I was recently featured on YAMR as part of the county's salute to essential workers. This was kind, but to have management turn around and threaten to take my proposed 72 cents an hour cost of living allowance is slap in the face. I have maxed out in my salary range and only receive the incentive pay. I do not get any additional increases during the year. My job classification is changing in July after 12 years with the department, but I will be paid at the same rate I currently am with no hope of an increase. I'm a divorced mother of a teenage son and I currently live in an apartment in Spanish Springs because my son attends Spanish Springs High School, Signature Academy, and his father lives in that same zone. I live where I do because my son needs to take the bus to and from school during the year and especially during election time. I am unable to transport him because I work 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, and extended hours again during election time, which is often two to three months at a time. My rent is currently 46% of my monthly income and my rent will most likely be increasing in September because the housing rate in Sparks is so ridiculously high. I do not have the funds to pay for a down payment for a house, so I remain a renter. I have checked on other rentals in my son's school zone, but there are no lower rents currently. I have cut my budget and have moved to a higher deductible health plan, but because my son has special needs and requires specialists, I have already maxed out that deductible amount for the year. Groceries and utilities continue to increase. The cost of living is increasing. This not only impacts my current day-to-day finances, but impacts my long-term finances. I hope to retire in five years, but may have to extend that time because my retirement is based on the top three years of income. Every cut in the next five years will impact me for the rest of my life. Please reconsider this decision. Don't let the only time you acknowledge how I spend essential I am to Washoe County be in a video on YAMR.
Next is Doug Glott.
Hi, my name is Doug Glott. I'm 72 years old. I have sat on city and county meetings over the years in my path as a teacher and as a U.S. postal worker. If we had a cost of living raise, we got it. No excuses because we didn't have enough students or not enough mail. Your word is your word and if it's written, it means time to go to court. My wife and I are voters, own two homes in Sparks, and have lived here 40 years. We do vote and we do pay taxes. Thank you for your time.
Next is Kim Graham.
My name is Kim Graham and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I am asking that you not suspend our collective bargaining agreement in order to stop the 2.5% cola and vacation buyout from going into effect on July 1st. I have been a county employee for almost 22 years now. I have worked through the previous recession, having gone without a cola, which took years to recover from. For years, I lived on this year losing my job during recession as a single person with a single income. I had to be very mindful of my expenses. So spending the contract and taking away the cola will not only affect me right now, but each year after, including my retirement. I worked in various county departments, contributing to the county and community in different roles. I worked hard for my 22 years, but then harder than the past four months. When COVID hit the county radar, we, county employees, stepped up. I not only still came to work every day at the health district at Main Street and perform my normal duties, but also sustained the ability to handle the pandemic response. I worked extra hours on weekends. I was sure to save my extra time off in compensation hours earned versus overtime as I believe in being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. I worked with my exhausted coworkers who worked 12-plus hour days, stuck out having a day off for three weeks straight. This is what we county employees have entered in the crisis to assist our county and the public. We continue to come to work and provide services. Please don't do us a disservice after all the great service we have given and will continue to provide. Please ask for new projections as the state reopens and people are spending money again. I don't believe the financial situation is as bleak as early projections showed. In addition, grants money is coming in and while it cannot be used for salaries and direct costs, it would be significant. It helps to cover those expenses. And we have millions of dollars in grants here and direct amount is significant. In closing, I ask that you take another look at the budget with numbers from May as this is a different picture than it was months ago and consider other alternatives than taking our colas. Thank you.
Suni Manga.
Commissioner Lucy, we need to call Commissioner Jung again.
Okay. Can we call Commissioner Jung? Commissioner Jung, do we have you?
Thank you. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, continue, please.
Hello, my name is Sally Monka and I'm leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23, 2020. I would like the county commissioners to know that taking away the cost of living expenses from me and my family will be detrimental to our family budget. This has been especially hard due to the loss of income from a spark during this period with furloughs. The fixed budget items on our home hasn't changed, but income availability has changed. As an essential employee, I have worked during this time period and will continue to do so so that services that we provide citizens continue smoothly. Now it is the turn of the Washoe County management to not capitalize on the current situation and try and make a quick buck on the back of essential employees. The county scenario is based on if an economy is totally shut down, but businesses have reopened, home sales continue, property taxes are coming in. Why is the county refusing to negotiate with associations? Why are they wanting to maintain such a large general fund balance of $48 million? If they don't get the $5 million from these employees, that will still leave us with $43 million. Why is that cash reserve not good enough? What is the point of county entering into agreements with associations and contracts with employees if the county is not willing to abide by it? Are either county commissioners going to ask the county management some harsh questions? We're not only employees, but are also voting citizens and need our elected officials to listen to us. This will affect me and my family directly and I'm requesting that the commissioners listen to the employees and not let the county management get away with this. This will set a bad precedent that they can or suspend contracts with employees and will show that they are not a good employer in this area. My request to the county commissioners is to dig deeply and find out more before they elect and approve the county to take away our cola. Thank you so much for your time.
Sue W.
My name is Sue Wile and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. I'm making a statement regarding county management's decision to suspend our collective bargaining agreement regarding our cola and our vacation leave buyout. I am against this decision. I believe there is a greater range of solutions than those that are being considered. I am disappointed that one of the first actions taken by the new county manager is to remain on part of that approved contract. It appears there are other solutions or at the very least a greater level of transparency regarding the county's financial situation that can be shared. It appears this course of action is based on the worst-case scenario rather than the improving conditions we are currently experiencing. If the county wants to rebound from this economic circumstance, withholding funds from hard-working employees does not encourage investment in this community or in the county. The stated mission of Washoe County is working together regionally to provide and sustain a safe, secure, and healthy community. Who do you think is doing that work? It's the employees of Washoe County. So how can the first step seized by management be to take away something that has been negotiated in good faith, a benefit that is legitimately earned and deserves by employees? The values espoused by the county are integrity, effective communication, and quality customer service. service. What is your commitment to those values? Are you extending the commitment to the county employees? The majority of Washoe County employees are also citizens of the county, therefore should be receiving the benefits of the mission and those values twice as often rather than less than once. It feels to me that the county management is just talking the talk. When hard times hit, management wants to take away from the people who are actually building the bridge to a better future. I understand there are fiscal and financial issues that I am not privy to. I also understand that effective communication and decision-making cannot happen if choices are made without all of the necessary information and without some level of compromise. If the values championed by the county are to be actionable and genuine rather than just words, the employees should also be the beneficiaries of such actions. Granted, we are the con to the wheel that make the county go, but glossing over our contributions is short-sighted. It may paint a prettier picture for your constituents, but it is false and disingenuous for the employees. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have two emails. The first is from Tammy Holstel. Good morning, Commissioners. I hope you are listening, and this is read in its entirety. For years now, I've discussed the lack of sheriff presence in our valley with the speeding, passing illegally, and loud music at all hours of the night. Now, listen good. This weekend, during the day, a shooting on Lemon Drive, one vehicle shooting at another, which was stated on Facebook, was reported to Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Now, I know Lemon Drive is City of Reno's, but not all the residents understand that, but not even the City of Reno is doing the job that needs to be done on Lemon Drive. It's time for you to change this now, not when it suits you. We pay taxes, and we deserve the protections for those taxes. You ignored the residents in the 2017 flood until the governor forced your hand. Now be proactive. Property was destroyed in 2017. Do we have to lose those lives now, too? Thank you, Tammy Holstel, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. And the next email is from Wendy Pitts. Public comment. Read in full and put on record. I contacted Chris Hicks, DA, and reported I wish to press charges. No response. Cyber stalking, threats, and intimidation reported February 14 to 18th, 2020 by Washoe County, its users, and assigns at the Washoe Golf Course, the Nextdoor app, ignored by CM Brown and WC Management. Therefore, I request the BCC direct the DA to investigate and file felony charges on my behalf if confirmed. Quote, cyber stalking, mom intimidation, and harassment occurred toward Ms. Pitts by WC Management, its users included, including LEO and club members Bellman on Nextdoor app, end of quote. If no action is taken by the DA, I will request an investigation by the U.S. Attorney's Office. Wendy Pitts. And that concludes your public comment on item number three, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item four, which is county managers' and commissioners' announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything for us this morning?
Only to point out, Mr. Chair, that one of the items, I think, on the consent agenda is the reopening of Wild Creek Golf Course, which many of our residents know closed certainly after the COVID-19 crisis began. So I wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. We worked with Mike Mazzafari and his organization, which runs Sierra Sage, to get the course back open, and I'm thankful to Mike for his efforts, also Dave Solaro. So, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, too, wanted to thank staff, Mr. Solero, and Mr. Mazzafari for getting Wild Creek back open. I think that that's a great facility, and I'm hopeful that it will be successful this time. In fact, I think it will, given Mr. Mazzafari's track record. For us at RTC, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would also like to acknowledge RTC, we're opening Route 5. We're moving it farther, I should say, north to Desert Skies Middle School, and that will access the Family Resource Center up there. That will happen about the same time that the school opens. And then in September, which I'm really proud of, and I want to thank you personally, as well as publicly, the other RTC board members for pushing a flex ride route into the Spanish Springs Valley. I've lived there for 33 years, and we've never had bus routes or a bus service out there. And I'm just very thankful for it. It's always been a self-fulfilling prophecy where staff has said, RTC staff in the past has said, there's no demand out there. There's no demand because there's no service. And I think that this will absolutely prove it wrong, and I'm, again, thankful, and I'd like to thank you for your assistance and just everything you've done to make sure that that went forward. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. On top of what Tammy still had spoken about, the shooting, you know, there's other crimes that are being, that are taking place up there in the North Valley. So one of them is really a sad situation. There's a couple, retired couple, Mr. and Mrs. Walls. Three years ago, their home was, you know, taken up. Their ability for them to live there was removed by the flood in 2017. And since then, they have lived on a neighbor's property in a manufactured, not a manufactured home, but a RV. So since they've been there, their property has had several robberies. They've broken into their shed and a few other things. The way to fix this would be, and by the way, this man is a disabled veteran, veteran of two branches of service. He's in a wheelchair, and we haven't been able to find veteran help for him. I think the community has tried to get help for him and his wife. If they could be somehow, we could elevate their home, get it back on the foundation, and allow them to go live there in their own home, then he could protect his own property. But yet, he can't do that from where he is living. So I'm just hoping that somebody can think of an idea. I'm going to try and raise some funds and get some estimates for getting his home back on the foundation. And so any help that I can get would really be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. All right. I have nothing either. So we will close item four and move on to our consent agenda. Is there any items on the consent agenda this morning that anybody needs any further discussion upon or details? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Burke Bigler, second from Commissioner Herman. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Hartung, can you verify? You with us? We're having some difficulties, but Commissioner Hartung.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you. Yes.
Okay, for some reason, I'm locked here. I may have to rejoin. Thank you.
Were you aye, sir?
I am an aye. Thank you.
All right, so we are, the motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, so we are on to a block at this time. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block for us this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do. Let me pull it up here. I would propose a motion that we put in block item eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Okay. All right, so I have a, I have a, propose for a block. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Manager, will you read those into the record, sir?
Would be my pleasure. Might take a minute here, but let's start with number eight, which is a recommendation to accept and ratify the Washoe County Regional Communication System P25 radio system inter-local agreement, which establishes an operational and management structure that provides the opportunity for signing agencies to participate in the ongoing governance, administration, and management of the P25 radio system, and a framework to allocate costs of the system to signing agencies proportionate to their use of the system and as required by the agreement, pay into the Washoe County Regional Communication System Fund, which is $4,550,927.10 over 15 years, $303,395.14 annually, and operations and maintenance fees totaling $335,623.98 for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, tech services. Item number nine is a recommendation to approve all role change requests pursuant to NRS 361.765 and/or NRS 361.768 for errors discovered in the 2016, 17, 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, and 2019, 20 secured and unsecured tax rolls. Authorize Chair to execute the changes described in Exhibits A and B and III. Direct the Washoe County Treasurer to correct the errors cumulative amounts of decrease to all taxing entities $188,290.12, the assessor. Item number 10 is a recommendation to authorize the Comptroller to renew the excess liability insurance policy with PDS Insurance Company for $213,812 effective July 1st, 2020, and authorize the Comptroller's office to sign the applications and agreements necessary to buying the coverage with funding from the Risk Management Fund. Item number 11, recommendation to authorize the Comptroller to renew the excess workers' compensation insurance policy and Safety National for the second year of a two-year term with annual premium installment of $283,130,000, and the property boiler and machinery cyber liability and pollution liability insurance policy with a public entity property insurance program for one year at a premium not to exceed $794,080 effective July 1st, 2020, and authorize the Comptroller's office to sign the applications and agreements necessary to buying coverage funding from the Risk Management Fund source. Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional engineering services between Washoe County and Corolo to provide construction management and bidding services for Pleasant Valley Intercepter Reach 3 and Pleasant Valley Lift Station Construction Management Services within the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Service territory, $1873,241. Item number 13 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between the Far West Engineering in Washoe County for engineering design services for the Hidden Valley Regional Park, the Fluent Disposal Facility, Phase One project of $401,000. Item number 14 is a recommendation to approve pursuant to NRS 278.040, and on the recommendation of the Chair, the appointment of Patricia Phillips to the Washoe County Planning Commission representing at-large south of the Truckee River. It generally includes all areas of incorporated Washoe County south of the Truckee River, include and includes Incline Village and Crystal Bay, to fill a term beginning on July 1st, 2020, and ending on June 30th, 2024, or until such time as Ms. Phillips no longer serves on the Planning Commission or her successor is appointed, whichever occurs first. Applicants include James L. Barnes, Derek S. Barrett, Adam R. Carmazi, Daniel D. Carn, Thomas D. Kersen, Michael LaFrancois.
I think so.
I hope so. Keith Lockard, Art O'Connor, Ariane B. Orville, Patricia A. Phillips, David Alexander D., I'm sorry, not David, D. Alexander D. T. Profant, Joy Royston, Joseph Schultz, Diane Storitz, Lentz. And so that's item 14. Item 15 is a recommendation to approve the attached resolution to augment the Equipment Services Fund in the amount of $267,380 to increase fiscal year 2020 budget authority for various operating expenses, and direct the Comptroller to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number 16 is a recommendation to approve the asset reassignment of multiple vehicles from various Washoe County departments to the Equipment Services Fund, and direct the Comptroller's office to make the appropriate asset adjustments, net is $280,267.68. Item number 17 is a recommendation to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $289,210 in expense to the FY20 Drug Court Expansion Grant, retroactive to July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and if approved, direct the Comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Item number 18 is a recommendation to acknowledge the grant award from the State of Nevada Administrative Office of the Courts to the Second Judicial District Court in the amount of $907,378.40, no match required, to support the specialty court programs effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Item number 19 is a recommendation to approve budget amendments totaling an increase of $846,710 in both revenue expense to the FY20 COVID-19 Crisis Response Grant, retroactive to January 20th, 2020 through March 15th, 2021, and direct the Comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Item number 20 is a recommendation to reappoint Jean Stos to the Washoe County Library Board of Trustees with the term effective July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2024.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on any of the items that have been placed in block?
I did not see any, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, before we call for the vote, I want to thank Ms. Patricia Phillips for her application, and then also Ms. Jean Stos for their applications to the Board of Library Board of Trustees and also the Planning Commission, and on all the other individuals that have placed an application in with the Board for Planning Commission. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the block vote signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are now back to item seven. Mr. Manager.
All right, item seven is a recommendation, discussion, and possible action to declare material breach by Sierra Care Clinical Services LLC of the contract between Washoe County and Sierra Care Clinical Services LLC for the purchase of COVID-19 test kits and provision of COVID-19 testing services, and possible action to terminate, seek a refund, continue, modify, or take other action determined to be appropriate by the Board.
All right, so we're, this is an, this is an item to discuss the material breach of Sierra Care Clinical Services, and I have, is there any presentation on this? We do have a staff report on this, Mr. Manager, but I believe there were some individuals from from Sierra Care that would like to speak today with us that are joining us via Zoom. Okay. All right. So we are waiting for the contact for Sierra Care to join us. Okay. All right, so we have Mr. Kenniston with us this morning. Mr. Kenniston, are you, are you with us?
I am, sir.
All right, Mr. Kenniston, can you take us through a brief presentation in regards to this item, sir?
I can, thank you.
Thank you.
To the Chair, Commission, County Manager, Staff, and Citizens, this is an item related to our initial response to the COVID-19 crisis, where the incident management team realized that we needed to increase the amount of tests and testing in our region. Our state lab was, was hard-pressed to keep up with the number of tests that were being taken or that we needed to have taken. They've since increased their capacity. We're very appreciative of that. But we were seeking to find a private vendor, a private lab, that could support testing. Our primary concern at the time was testing our first responder personnel, because of course, they move throughout our community, and there's a high probability that if a first responder became COVID-positive, that they could be, I'll use the term a super-spreeder, if you will, as they moved and responded to issues throughout our community. So to that end, we were able to find this company and to engage in a contract with them for $825,000 for 5,000 of these tests. And the idea was that the test could be administered, and then they are sent through, through the mail to the lab. The lab had guaranteed a 72-hour turnaround, and then we could immediately isolate or quarantine any of our positives. So we began that, we began that process. There were, there were hiccups, as there would be in any new program such as this, as we worked out reporting processes and, and protocols through the State of Nevada, who must be notified as well, and, and the ability, how we would notify negatives and, and contact trace the positives. But that was, was worked out fairly quickly, and we began testing. Now, as the Governor asked us to test asymptomatic, these tests also came into play, and we used them with some vulnerable populations, such as the homeless. Where, where we began to run into problems was receiving the test results. And we ended up in a situation where, in some cases, it was 11, 14 days, and even more in some cases. You can see why this would be problematic if you don't find that you are positive until weeks after the test. Then those were weeks that the disease was being spread in our community. So we were actually putting the community responders at risk. And as that occurred, we had to give the, the company notice that, that this was unsatisfactory, that we're putting the community at risk. There were some back-and-forth discussions, and we were unable to, we were unable to achieve satisfaction, if you will. We could not get the test results quicker. And finally, the District Health Authority said that we needed to discontinue use, and we went back to just using the state lab.
Okay.
Subject to your questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kenniston, we appreciate it. Are there any questions for Mr. Kenniston in regards to this issue? I'm seeing none. So as I understand it, and then we have an individual participating with us, Mr. Nathan J. Amon from, who is counsel for Sierra Care, I believe. Is Mr. Amon on the phone? On Zoom?
He's on Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Amon, are you with us? Can you hear us, sir? Okay. Mr. Amon, if you, we're showing that you're unmuted. We can't hear you. All right.
They're trying to get on.
Trying to log on.
Nathan does not have status.
Okay. Is it possible for them to call in? Or, this is making it very challenging. Mr. Wattsviel, are you available?
I am.
Mr. Wattsviel, obviously, this is a legal action to terminate this contract for material breach. Is there anything that we, as our legal staff, that you would advise us for at this time in regards to this item?
Well, what you're going to want to do is make sure that Sierra Care has the opportunity to present any evidence or any statement that they have, understanding that they don't seem to be able to communicate right now. Maybe the best thing to do would be to continue the item to a later time. I know that you have some hearings set here in about the next three or four minutes, and that would be one of the options that you have.
What we could do, okay, what we'll try to do, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to continue this item right now until later in the agenda. All, what I'll do is we'll take a different item at this time, being that we have nothing until our 12 o'clock, our 11 o'clock, because it is time certain. What I will do is put us in recess. I do want to make, put around an item on the record. We did pull, as I did state early in the, in the meeting, we did pull item six from the agenda today. There will, that will be heard at a later time and date or brought back to the, the Commission if need be for discussion. There will be no public comment, and we will not open that item. So public, any other public comment will be heard under general public comment in the afternoon. With that being said, we will be in recess till 11 o'clock. Commissioner Jiang, do we still have you on the phone?
Yes, you do, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for bearing with us with the, with the technical difficulties.
Hey, listen, I think it's usually operator. Thank you for bearing with me.
So we're going to go, Commissioner, we're going to go to item 21 next, which is be the Verizon Monopol Appeal. And then if we can fix the item with Sierra Care, we'll bring them back on. Hopefully, they can join via Zoom. If they can't, they're probably going to call in on the other line. You may not be able to hear them, because if we put them in on the conference line, you may not be able to hear them. But we'll try to help you as much as we can, okay?
Yeah, I've read the staff report, and I've seen what the, our options are. And another, you might want to ask the legal team, another option is they can write us written testimony, too, and not have to monkey with this next week or the week after. Because as I said, it's usually operator error, and we're all trying to learn this. But to delay a public process and public liabilities is not right either. So I'd rather weigh more on what is best for my citizens than what is best for this vendor. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'll wait for Marcia to get back down here, and then we'll jump in. All right. We are all ready? Okay. All right, Elizabeth, you want to bring us back?
Yeah, I'm looking around.
Okay. Okay. Let me know when you're ready. Do we have Sierra Care? The Osman Mohiden? Okay. Yeah, we'll go to seven, let's go to seven. We'll reopen. All right, bring me back. All right. We are back in session as Board of County Commissioners from a brief recess. It is now 11:03. We have fixed, I believe, some technical issues with our, our meeting. At this time, we're going to reopen seven, which is item with Sierra Care. We do have, I believe, Mr. Osman Mohiden, the CEO of SDI Labs, joining us via Zoom. Mr. Mohiden, are you with us this morning?
Yes, sir, I am.
Thank you. All right, fantastic. So, Mr. Mohiden, we are with, we have read the item into the agenda, into the record, and the Commissioners have had a presentation from our manager, or our executive staff, and also our, our legal team. And we are going to allow you some time today to provide your testimony in regards to this item. So with that, Mr. Mohiden, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate, ladies and gentlemen, hearing our side of the solution and the story on this front. So I'll, I'll try to be very respectful of the time of your busy schedule. I was told I was allocated 10 minutes to speak. Is that correct? So I'll.
That is correct, sir. You'll have 10 minutes to present.
Okay, thank you. With that, let me just do a quick introduction of myself, Osman Mohiden. My professional background comes from the technology industry and science. I used to work at Microsoft for nine years. And after Microsoft, I did healthcare startups. And about six years ago, we partnered and acquired SDI Labs, which was founded 33 years ago from two molecular geneticists from UCLA, who were ahead of their time to do cytogenetics, to identify Down Syndrome of prenatal fetus. So we partnered with them because we had data science technology of pathogen detection system. So we wanted to use the molecular diagnostic platform to identify underserved disease areas. So the vision and the solution of SDI is to identify early detection of three key underserved disease areas, which is in mental health and substance abuse, autoimmune in women's health, and infectious diseases, both respiratory, UTI, STI, by early detection to avoid the admission rates to ER before the symptoms become too severe and create the onset of pneumonia and co-infection. We use a lot of data technology because of my background from the technology industry, using the science biomarkers and LDTs. We started on this path of COVID-19 beginning of February, when we saw in Wuhan, 11 million people were locked down. We were airlifting people from cruises and bringing them down to California to station. The testing aspect wasn't defined by the CDC. So we retooled our whole system and our architecture to develop our own lab-developed test, because there weren't any lab-developed tests. So we worked very closely with FDA and California Department of Health. As a matter of fact, we were one of the first labs to receive the live virus, not a synthetic one, because of the approach that we were using to get the limit of detection and the accuracy rate of the virus itself. So after three weeks, after heavy due diligence from FDA, we were one of the three labs in the country that got an approval for a lab-developed test, not a reagent test. On March 4, it was published on the FDA website. The documentation is there. And we use the approach of data-driven diagnostics to do it. And the seven other tests were from the hospital systems like Stanford, Northwestern, and the two other labs were Eurofin and SDI and another university lab out of Carolinas. So when we got the accuracy and the quality using the data from the first epicenters of South Korea and China, that's what led us to ratify the genes that should be targeted in this novel virus. We started with Washoe County about end of February. I still remember the first setup we were doing was in Pasadena, where we were setting up the drive-through site because of the crisis with the number of people that were landing up in the ERs. And in the midst of this, Dalryshak Chimi and connected with Jim and Wes with the program management, and they were setting it up. They were forward-thinking, and they wanted to help the citizens over there. And they were setting up fire stations and a program to bring in the people to do the testing using paper requisitions. And I requested the program leaders to please not do paper requisitions because of the handwriting misinformation. The data is equally important as the test itself for the accuracy. And the collection method is equally important. So we shared with them a lot of training, our FDA documentation, our service staff was available to them 24/7 to set up these sites. They insisted to do paper requisition. So as a result, we hired data entry people to get that information into the system, manually done. And then the other challenge was the reporting system on HL7. So on the HL7 front, we helped with the, I'm forgetting the person's name that hired the company that didn't have this. the, I'm forgetting the person's name, that hired the company that didn't have the scheduling system and the reporting system aligned. So we worked with that company as partners around doing that. So the point was, for us, it's all about the patient's safety and the public safety, as a healthcare provider, to provide the best quality solution that we can. This is not a business. We are dealing with a crisis and a very virus that is mutating, that is changing on a daily basis and causing a lot of different symptoms. So our idea was use the data, use the science, and stick to it and provide the quality around the testing that we are providing. So on that front, we partnered all our customers. It's a partnership. This is not a customer vendor relationship. We were, we are all new to this pandemic and this crisis. So the order was need. Everyone's heart is at the right place to help with the public safety and figure out the care and the cure for the solution and not overwhelm our healthcare system. So with that, we started the program for the, we received in totality from Washoe County about 1,500 tests, specimens. About 1,100 of them were all processed. In the last 400, in the 360 tests, we were told that, you know, we thought this was symptomatic, paper collected, patients coming to fire it. Our staff tested, for the first 11 tests, 1,100 tests, we found the positive rate to be consistent with other counties that we were testing, to be around 5% to 6%. In some cases, up to 11%, but minimum 5% to 6%. In the last 400 tests that we received, we found the positive rate to be less than 1%. So we thought our protocols and our testing, it was an easy thing to do, to just release those test results. So we thought something went off in our testing protocols that we were doing. So we retested our own dying, the same set of patients, and we found the same test results. We immediately reached out to Jim and Wes, explained them the situation, and said, like, is this something going on on the collection side that we should know about? Because our data is going off with the checks and balances that we have in place. At that point in time, we found out that the program has significantly changed. The collection method has changed, right? Like, instead of nasal pharyngeal swab, which goes all the way up to the nose, or an oral pharyngeal swab, which goes with the instruction set with every patient, there was a third collection method that was created called anterior nasal swab, which is the swab of the nasal. We are not approved for that test. As a result, we weren't collecting enough human cells. That was issue number one. Issue number two was from symptomatic patients. To expand the program, we learned that the homeless were tested and other patient populations, which were asymptomatic. In asymptomatic patients, the negative rate is very low, depending on the viral load the patient has before the onset happens. So that started making sense. Even then, we told Jim and Wes, I think we are ready to release these test results if you are open to it. We don't want you to collect it, but we still think as an extra measure, we should spot check about 40 to 50 patients, just to ensure that the collection was correct and the asymptomatic part is done. Because we believe providing the wrong test result will do more harm, because those people will go out in the community and infect other people, their families, their coworkers, and colleagues. So that's the action we took on that front around doing that. At that point in time, the turnaround time got delayed because we were retesting and we were doing the spot test. And one of our lab technicians also communicated regularly with the science staff over there, our service staff, on the weekends, on the early mornings, on a regular basis, because we are dealing with a pandemic and a virus testing scenario. So this is, we have the data and sequence of events in writing and compilation that we are glad to provide. But the bottom line is this, ladies and gentlemen, is like, we have a crisis, we still have a public safety. We don't have a quality issue. We provide the service. We want to help the public and the patient. For us, whether it's a citizen or an employee or a government employee, doesn't matter. It's a patient. And infectious diseases work at a patient population level. Our job is to provide that information so that we can contain this virus and help the patient who turns past that, to get them to the right level of care. That's what we wanted. That is what we have been trying to do. So what we like the opportunity is, the testing is two component. We see at the collection level, there are a lot of areas of improvement that could be provided. We want to help. We want to provide our own people and training to ensure the collection is done correctly so that we can test correctly and do the turnaround time. We can promise that turnaround time. But if our hands are tied when the collection is on paper, and if the collection is not done correctly, we cannot abide by the quality of the science and the testing results that we can provide. So...
Mr. Mohiden, can you please make some comments? Your 10 minutes have expired.
Okay, all right. With that, my request is, we want to do this right. We would like an opportunity to work with you as we started with the original program owners, right? Like, who has worked with us. Their heart is at the right place on the public safety. So what we are asking is, even if we have to spend extra time and effort on this, for the citizens of Washoe County, to continue the testing, because, which is needed, around doing that. And we can guarantee you, we'll be better than any state lab or a national lab that you have in terms of the data, the service, the quality of the testing, and the turnaround time.
Thank you, Mr. Mohiden. Are there any other comments or discussion from the commissioners now that we've had presentation, both from our staff and also the staff at Sierra Care? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was waiting to see if other commissioners were gonna chime in.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand, because in the staff report on page two, it basically says 24 to 48 hours. And then, Osman, you stated, and would you do me the favor of pronouncing your last name?
No worries, sir. It took me 20 years myself. It's Mohiden.
Mohiden, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mohiden, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand, because you said, let me get back to the page where I wrote this, you said that there were not enough collection of human cells. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. I did say that.
Okay. So, but weren't we following the protocols that were laid out by the, in your testing procedure?
No, sir. In certain cases, that wasn't followed.
Okay. Okay, so that, but I'm still a little fuzzy, because, because why would that increase? So you were getting false negatives, you felt?
Yes. What we felt was, there is two aspects, Mr. Wong. So pardon me if I go into the science a little bit. When you collect, right, like, the method that we approved and provided in every kit and every specimen is to get the patient to cough three times, so that it's easier than the nasal one. So the virus comes up, and you collect the collection from the tonsillitis area. That is what's called concentration of the DNA. When it comes to the lab, we look at the concentration of the DNA that is provided. This is a very fickle virus, right? So the concentration of the DNA is important. So when we extract the viral RNA out of it, we need to have enough human cells to extract the right RNA to isolate and purify it, and genetic material amplify it, right? So when we don't get enough human samples, it shows inconclusive. Or it throws off the test results to a close negative or a close positive.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, so, I mean, can you understand why there's frustration on the part of Washoe County and why we've come to this point? I mean, does that, does it, does it make sense to you how we came to the 825,000 number?
I don't know, sir. I didn't deal with, on the financial side of it, but the frustration is a little bit puzzling to me. The reason being, the program leads, the Jim and Wes, we have cordial emails from them. Our staff works really well with them, and we had a whole plan that was moving forward. I don't know when this changed into serving the public safety to a political thing for budget reason or money part. That is still a little bit of a blur to me, and I don't have a full understanding. And pardon my ignorance on that.
Okay, that's fine. So for our staff, who, is it just you, Mr. Kenniston, that we have, or do we have somebody else?
No, that's it, Commissioner Hartung. It's just Mr. Kenniston.
Okay. So, Mr. Kenniston, are we using somebody else to do our testing at this point? Or are we still using this lab?
We are using the state lab, and we've had none of these issues with the state lab.
But it's a different form of a test, correct?
I am not a public health expert, so let me caveat with that. But my understanding is no, they are both PCR tests. The difference is that the SDI test, we would ship to a lab in California, you know, thus allowing us to increase the capacity because we're using both state lab and the California lab.
I'm asking about the physical test itself, Mr. Kenniston. I'm asking about, so one is a nasal test, where a swab is actually inserted through the nasal canal. And the other, the way that Mr. Mohiden described, it was a coughing test.
Yeah, let me clarify, Mr. Wong, and help Mr. Kenniston to, in this sense, it's like, I'm very well aware of the state lab, and because they use the CDC kit that is centrally is provided. So there are three types of tests. So there is the nasal pharyngeal one, which goes all the way up to an angle to a nasal cavity. Within that nasal one, there is another anterior nasal one, which is a little bit unreliable, because you're not going all the way, and you'll be doing it in the nostril. Then the third one is the oral pharyngeal one, and then there is saliva and sputum, which I won't go, which is what we do, because the anterior one, anterior nasal, is not a reliable collection method. And the nasal pharyngeal one, depending on the pain threshold of the patient, it doesn't go all the way up. So we chose the oral pharyngeal swab, because based on the science and the data, the wider cavity that we have in the mouth, and the technique of getting it coughed, it comes up around doing that. They both are RT-PCR tests, but the collection method is different. Now, RT-PCR is a very broad term. It depends on underneath what kit you're using, what instrumentation you're using, what combination of protocols you're using, what is your limit of detection, multiple things count. Believe me, I can send you the data. The initial CDC kit that has been used in the state lab had significant amount of quality issues. I'll just leave it at that. I don't want to get into the political side of it. But in terms of quality, that won't be the issue. For us, the last 400 test results that we, where the biggest claim I heard is the turnaround time, it was easy for us to just release those test results and not retest and try to do the right thing. So the issue part could be a little bit subjective, in the sense is like, in the novel virus, in a crisis, what path do you use? Do you use the path of truth and the science and what data you're seeing, or you just focus on satisfying this as a business? We chose, this is patient lives, and we are in a crisis, we chose the path of the science and the data. And it was easy for us to release those last test results.
Okay, so, but you can, you can understand...
Commissioner Hartung, can you hold on a second? We also have...
Commissioner Hartung, this is Manager Brown. I've asked the health officer to join the call, because I think there are some clarifications that can be made.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah. Because I'm, I mean, I'm fuzzy, and my last statement, Mr. Chairman, and I'll relinquish my time, and I thank you for allowing me to ask so many questions. But, Mr. Mohiden, you can understand how the Washoe County came to this point and how we were frustrated. I mean, I, and I sense your frustration also. But I, I think that there's, I think that there's some, there possibly could have been some ways to communicate back and forth, where this could have been circumvented, but I...
Yeah, which we thought we were doing, Mr. Wong. We just don't know who is in charge. The people that we are working with, we have hourly and daily communication with them, right, with our staff. So we were on a path and a plan. When this bifurcated, we don't know who the rest of the people is, to be honest with you. I heard someone named Bob, which I haven't talked to. I've talked to Jim and Wes on a weekly basis myself to make the time when we were seeing something going off. My general operations manager, Shauna, Mo, Brian, all of these people, I have been constant communication with the epidemiology department, with the program management, with the Health and Human Services over there. So we have all those names and communications established. So we are, ourselves are a little bit confused about who we should have communicated.
Okay, and so, my final, hold on a second. My final, my final statement, Mr. Mohiden, I think you can understand our frustration with this. And I think, given, if there were reversal of the rules, you too would have been frustrated. And I'd like to hear from our health officer, Mr. Kevin Dick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll stand up.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, is the health officer on?
Yes, this is Kevin Dick. Can you hear me?
Yeah, maybe you could shed some light on this issue. But before you start, I guess I'd like to clarify for the commissioners. I've been on calls about three times a week ever since the pandemic started. There were consistent and persistent delays in getting these test results from these folks. And I think Aaron mentioned it in his presentation, that was the first problem, is we could not get the results in a timely manner. And regardless of the type of tests, I'm not sure that is relevant to why we couldn't get them in the 48 or 72 hour we asked for. The second thing is, as time went on, we started having problems, other problems with the quality of the tests, which ultimately led with many of our participants, our first responders, asking us as the incident management team, could we please stop using this company because it's taking too long and the quality of the test isn't there? So that hasn't been shared. I think you ought to know that. I'm not a medical professional, but I've been watching how this happens. Maybe the health officer can give us some more insight here.
Yeah, Mr. Dick, if you could provide us a little bit of clarification in regards to how the testing part, you know, how that occurred, and then how the test kits we received, and how those results, we would have received those in a timely manner. If you can give some clarity to that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Chair Lucy, and county commissioners. This is Kevin Dick, District Health Officer for Washoe County Health District. And when we, when we received originally the test collection kits from SDI, to check out the kits that we were using, would be using, they were nasopharyngeal swab collection kits, which is what we thought we were going to be getting, since they'd sent those to us as the samples to check out. Then, when we got bulk shipments of the test collection kits, they were primarily the swabs that had the instructions for the oral sample collection. We discussed the collection kits not being the nasopharyngeal swabs. Charlene Alvey was involved with these discussions with SDI as well, the health branch director, for our response. And the discussion was of concerns with the oral testing. And we discussed with them that we would be, that we preferred to do the nasal collection, and that was agreed upon during the call. So that was not something where we were not following the written directions from the testing. That was something that was discussed with SDI. Also have peer-reviewed literature from Dr. Mark Pandory at the Nevada State Public Health Lab on the efficacy of the nasal swab collection, as far as that being a reliable method of sample collection and getting the viral DNA adequately through that approach. So just, that's some background on why the nasal swabs were used, and that is an acceptable sample collection method. And then the issue with the results being reported back... And then the, the issue with the results being reported back to Washto County from the samples, specimens that were submitted to SDI, we had delays of 10 days that were occurring more and which is not acceptable with a 72-hour turnaround time without any of the explanation and discussion of, of the additional testing they were doing. We were calling, trying to get our results back from the lab because they were so delayed it was not, not supporting any public health service really by the time that we got the test back to know whether somebody was positive or negative for the contact tracing effort that was the reason that we were doing the testing in the first place. We also had experience with a number of the test collection kits showing up damaged and leaking and not suitable for use for the sample collection and, and transport back to the lab. So those are, those are some of my comments on what occurred with the SDI lab.
Great.
Leave it at that.
So if I, if I may, I would like to add a couple of things. There is a lot of confusion on the nasal swab. There are two types of nasal swab. We are approved for the FDA for nasal pharyngeal swab and we do approve that and we say easier collection is on the oral pharyngeal. But what was communicated to us when the, in the last test result is it wasn't a nasal pharyngeal swab, it was an interior nasal swab, although they both have the same words, but they are two different collection methods. So I just want to, from a science point of view, completely agree on the nasal pharyngeal swab. And we did say that, we did submitted that document. We are not backing out from there, but what we got was a interior nasal swab and we were told symptomatic patients and move to asymptomatic patients. That wasn't communicated to us, to paper requisitions. And the turnaround time, I have it by patient. I will be happy to provide it exactly on what patient, on what day, on the location it was collected from, right? To the most degree of 1,500 patients. I would like to use the data and we are ready to own up to the mistakes. Absolutely, if there is, we are all dealing with a crisis, Quest and Lab work and state labs are dealing with capacity issues and turnaround time. So in this case, if that is the case, I would like to know how many patients that we, we are talking about amongst the 1,500 and what exactly happened in the collection method so that we can stick to the data. And what we are requesting is moving forward, we still want to work with it. The quality is not an issue on our side. You want to continue doing the nasal pharyngeal swab?
Mr. Mujahid, and I appreciate your willingness to participate and work through this. We did provide you the opportunity to respond during your 10 minutes. I think there is, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but there's vast, there is discretion here in regards to what we're trying to say. So I'm going to ask you one quick question, a yes or no question, sir, and just a yes or no. Are you in receipt of the letter from the district attorney, from our district attorney, Christopher Hicks, dated June 10th, 2020, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then also, I have a letter from you dated, a compliance letter dated from you drafted to Mrs. Albee from, on June 8th. Did that, was that drafted in your, by yourself, sir?
Yes, well, with my team, but I did sign that letter.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. I don't think this is an issue of science and I, I think we've heard enough comment in regards to this presentation on both sides and both sides have been able to present. This is not an issue of science. This is an issue of performance on a contract that needed to be addressed in a timely manner and was not. And if there is other issues that need to be taken up, that could be taken up in a court with the attorneys. But right now, I believe that based upon the provided information that I was provided, the ability for testimony to be given by both parties today, I'm, I'm ready to move for a motion on this. So I appreciate everybody participating today. At this time, I'm going to open it up for a motion. Madam Vice Chair.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
So I move that a material breach of the contract between Washto County and Sierra Care Clinical Corporation for purchase of SDI viral test kits for COVID-19 has occurred and the contract should be terminated on the advice of the Washto County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Program and Washto County Health District. Determination of a material breach by contract of Sierra Care includes but is not limited to Sierra Care's failure to adequately provide viable test kits and timely notice of testing results as specified in the contract. This contract was meant to increase the county's ability to test and quickly notify positive tests of COVID-19 to allow for isolation and quarantine to stop the spread of the disease in our community. The funding for the contract was provided by Washto County in the amount of $825,000 at the recommendation of the incident management team.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. So I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do I have any public comment on this issue?
No, sir.
All right, so no further public comment. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify.
Can we just have a bit of discussion?
No, sir. There is a motion on the floor at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Was Commissioner Hartung aye?
He was an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously with all voters, all commissioners voting. We are completed with that item and we are now moving on to item 21. And this is a item for, this is our first public hearing. Our public hearing is on the agenda today. We're for a time certain of 11 or any time thereafter. We are now in our public hearing. Bring the public hearing opened. This is, Mr. Manager, can you read us into this public hearing, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The public hearing appeal, item 21 is a public hearing, appeal of the Washto County Board of Adjustments, denial of special use permit, case number WSUP 19-0006, Verizon Monopole to approve a special use permit for the construction of a new wireless cellular facility consisting of a 45-foot-high stealth monopole structure, AKA cellphone tower disguised to resemble a pine tree, designed as a co-location facility. The proposal also requests varying the landscape requirements by not requiring any additional landscaping. The project is located on a three-acre site at 1,200 Tunnel Creek Road for Epic Wireless on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. This is an appeal to the county commission from the BOA for a Verizon monopole. And with us today, I believe, we have representatives from Verizon. We also have Ms. Julie Oleander, which is Washto, for Washto County Planner, who is representing Washto County in this. But we, being that this is an appeal, we have, we've done in the past, we allow the appellant 10 minutes to present their, their appeal to the commission and have discussion upon that. Is there any need for Ms. Ole, before we have the appellant present, is there any need by any commissioner for a presentation from staff on the specifics of this item? Seeing none, we will go to the first, we will go to our Verizon representative. So we, do we have somebody there on?
Yes.
All right.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chairman Lucy, members of the commission, can you hear me all right? This is Rudy Reyes.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Reyes. How are you? Yes, we can hear you just fine. Thank you for joining us.
Great, thank you so much. I'm the Regional Vice President for State and Local Government Affairs and the Associate General Counsel for Verizon in the West. And I wanted to speak before you to express my appreciation to you for providing Verizon with this opportunity to present arguments in favor of our appeal.
All right, Mr. Reyes. So we're going to start your timer. So you're going to have 10 minutes starting now and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, I'm here with my associates to present our case in favor of our appeal to build this new macro 4G cell site in the Incline Village area of Lake Tahoe in Washto County. This cell site is needed for our customers to provide greater connectivity and public safety for, for the region. On a personal note, I just want to say that the Incline Village in Lake Tahoe area is a very special place for me and my family. My husband, my son and I are all regular visitors to Lake Tahoe, hiking, biking and visiting all around, all around the year. And it's been astonishing to me, if you just look back two, three, five years, how much connectivity, wireless connectivity has grown. I can remember being in desolation, ordiness and there being zero G. And now there's, we've made great strides in providing connectivity, which is a huge for our public safety, but also for our customers and for our economy. So.
Can you read some more?
We greatly appreciate the unique values and aesthetics of this area and the community and code is very critical to the, to us. In this regard, we've communicated with the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District Chief Ryan Summers, Sheriff Darren Ballam, Incline Village business owners, the Hyatt Hotel and state agencies, all of which realize the benefits to residents, businesses and visitors to the area of having a more reliable network to support our customers, your constituents and the public safety community. Several of these groups have provided support statements for today's hearing. I'd like to reflect that in the record. As you will hear, we carefully selected this proposed site after reviewing at least 20 other possible locations. And we believe this location best meets the needs of our customers and first responders and respects the values and aesthetics of this great region. So thank you for your time. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to now turn it over to our network team to provide you a little more details on this particular site.
By all means, and just please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, who, Mr. Reyes, who would be presenting next?
That would be our counsel, Paul Albritton.
Okay. Paul, are you on the phone, Mr. Albritton?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me, commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, we actually have a presentation beginning with Buzz Lynn of Epic Wireless, followed by Jennifer Valencia, our RF engineer, and then myself. I see we're already running a little over time and we hope that we can have your indulgence to run over three or four minutes, but I'll ask Buzz Lynn to please continue with his presentation.
All right. Mr. Lynn. All right, it seems like we're having challenges with Mr. Lynn.
I guess so. Is, can we move on? Is Jennifer Valencia, are you online?
She's here.
Mr. Valencia, Mrs. Valencia?
I am, here.
Okay, Ms. Valencia.
Okay, we'll proceed with Jennifer's presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners.
Hi.
My name is Jennifer Valencia and I am the radio frequency engineer for Verizon, working the Tahoe area. Also, I created the RF engineer statement provided in the staff report in Exhibit F, which I will be referencing. Verizon recognizes that there is a need for improved wireless cellular service in the Tahoe Basin. We have been working on improving service in the area with different types of projects like new build macros, small cells and modifying our existing sites. Specifically in Incline Village, there is a gap in in-building and in-vehicle coverage in the Ponderosa Ranch area, the Mill Creek area, the Hyatt Regency area and the half-mile stretch south of Lake Shore Boulevard along Highway 28. The closest serving facility in this area is a site called Incline Village, which is 2.7 miles north of the Gap area. You can see it on the top of the coverage map. In the coverage maps, you also see that the Gap area only has outdoor coverage, which is illustrated in gray. The sector that covers this gap currently covers a large area of 4.06 square miles, which is shown in olive green in the best over map. Due to the distance between the Incline Village facility and the Gap area, signal is weak. Also during times of high traffic like the summer months and winter ski season, service is compromised. In the RF statement, I showed an example of the traffic analysis during Martin Luther King weekend. In the charts, I showed the percentage of the facility's data resource block being used hourly from January 16th through January 23rd. The charts illustrate that on January 18th, between 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM, the 700 megahertz band reached 100% occupancy. During this time, customers already connected to the network experienced delays and poor service and customers trying to make new connections were rejected and unable to access the network. This example shows a need for more capacity in this area. Due to the increased demand, Verizon is proposing a new facility strategically placed to provide dominant signal in the Gap area. As you can see in the proposed coverage maps, the proposed facility will now cover the Ponderosa Ranch area, the Mill Creek area, the Hyatt Regency area and Highway 28. This facility will provide service to an area of 5.84 square miles and a population of 3,230 residents. Also, this facility will provide reliable service to local visitors, or local businesses, visitors and most importantly, public safety. I would now like to introduce Paul Albritton, who is a federal law expert.
All right, Mr. Albritton.
Chairman Lucy and members of the commission, I see about two minutes left. If Buzz Lynn had been here to speak with you, he would have gone through with you the two-year process that he endeavored to find the least intrusive location and best design for this facility. I want to call your attention to Exhibit F in your packet, where we provided you the RF justification that Jennifer just reviewed, as well as a 34-page alternative analysis that reviews over 20 alternatives that we looked at to try and find the least intrusive means for providing service to this area. The Telecommunications Act affects your decision in three key ways. One, you probably know you can't make a decision based on the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, and I want you to know that that extends to proxy reasons such as property value, effect on bees or trees, all are barred by the federal law. Bill Hammond of Hammond and Edison Consulting Engineers is on the line and can speak to you about how this facility fully complies with FCC requirements. Second, any decision you must make is, must be based on substantial evidence. And this is where we feel the Board of Adjustments decision failed in that they decided that one finding could not be made, that was, that the site was not physically suitable for our facility. It's a three-acre facility, subparcell, zoned LDS with trees. We're proposing a faux tree pole, only 45 feet tall, where there are trees up to 50 to 70 feet high. And we believe that there is no evidence for the Board of Adjustments decision, which seemed to be based on the fact that they felt that there was no gap in service from any carrier, where federal law has now changed. And I think that you've heard from Ms. Valencia, a very clear explanation of the gap that we have in this area. The third issue I wanted to discuss is prohibition of service. The federal law says that you can't make a decision that would have the effect of prohibiting service. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has a two-prong test. First, the carrier must show that there's a significant gap, and I think Jennifer's done that for you today, as well as her document in Exhibit F. Second, we need to show that this is the least intrusive means of providing that service. And we believe the alternatives analysis, also in Exhibit F, clearly shows that the design with a faux log cabin, a 45-foot fake tree, and the placement of this facility is really the least intrusive for providing service to this critical area, to this, and to this community. And the denial of the facility would essentially constitute a prohibition of service. I see I'm out of time, I'll wrap up very quickly by saying the documents that we provided, we feel are, we know are adequate to submit to federal court. And we do that because we provide substantial evidence to defend any decision that you make to approve the facility from any neighbor lawsuit. We're currently in defending the TARPa, the TRPA, in a Washto County facility at this time down in Lincoln Creek. It was built a few. Creek that was built a few years ago, but with ongoing litigation. With that, we'd like to answer any questions that you have, apologize that our timing was a little bit rushed, and hope that you can approve this facility for better service for Mill Creek, as well as Ponderosa Ranch, Highway 28, and adjacent areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albritton. I appreciate the presentation. We're very sorry about the timing. I know it's challenging to try to do that very quickly with some of the technical difficulties. We're trying to be as flexible as possible. Are there any questions by any of the Commissioners in regards to this item? I don't see any. Commissioner Harton or Commissioner John?
Yes. Commissioner. Chairman. Yeah, do you guys, for Verizon, do you guys have a photograph of the stealth design that you intend on using?
Well, it is in Mr. Lynn's presentation. I don't know if Mr. Lynn is back online. It was a, we have a PowerPoint presentation. The presentation was provided to staff so that they have a PowerPoint that they could pull up. We have taken multiple photo simulations of the site.
It's online now, Paul.
Hey, Paul.
It's online now.
It's online now.
Great.
I just want to see the photo simulation of the tree and what you guys intend on putting up there, if you can.
Sure. And it's a 45-foot stealth tree pole. The pole itself is only 40 feet. The top five feet is faux tree, and then all of the equipment is contained in a faux log cabin. There will be a three-foot split-rail fence along the one side of the perimeter, and that is, the total square footage is approximately 500 square feet. The equipment, the log cabin, is about 350 square feet, and the area where the tree is located is about 150 square feet. I don't know if any of my comrades online would like to add to that description.
This is Buzz. I don't know if you can hear me, but it sounds like the answer is yes.
We got you, Mr. Lynn. Thank you for joining us.
It's Plan B, but here we go. The space that you're seeing right here, you'll find this in your attachment F on page 71 of the packet that you received. You'll find in this photo right here, a drone being flown at 45 feet. And when we superimpose that into the photograph at a 45-foot monopine, you'll see the profile of this tree is in here and actually being shrouded right now by a slightly taller tree that is right next to it. If we go to, let's see, I'm going to scroll up a little bit for GIFs by scrolling and scratchiness of the video GIF, or excuse me, the, see if you can see them here. But here is the drone hovering at 45 feet over the proposed location. And here, we have a superimposed 45-foot monopine in place, and you can see the adjacent tree next to it. We intentionally clustered this with a group of three other trees in the least visible and least intrusive position so as not to affect the GIFs. It does not affect the GIFs. That's really all I've got to add to that right now. Are there any specific questions regarding that part? Do you have appeals for the law?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Harton? Commissioner?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, no, that's, I just wanted to see the basic design of the tree itself. And just as a footnote, my sister, who lives in Scottsdale, in a very, very well-to-do neighborhood, and they have stealth cactus monopoles, well, they're not monopoles, but they're, you know, cell towers. And you got to get right up on the darn things to realize that they're not real cactus. So I think that they've done a good job on this. I appreciate the time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. All right, Mr. Albritton, I do have one quick question for you. In regards to, it's my understanding that legally, service must be provided in certain areas where there's a lack of available service. Is that correct, Mr. Albritton? Can you expand upon that?
Well, the concept of a significant gap has expanded. In 2005, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said that it's a fact-based analysis and that there's no bright line of what constitutes a significant gap. In this case, Verizon Wireless is trying to provide service in its AWS, Advanced Wireless Service, and PCS, Personal Cellular Service bands. In this area, they provide a higher data rate, don't travel as far as some of the longer bands, but over 50% of our, over 50% of Verizon Wireless's network is in those bands. So we have a gap in those bands. In addition, there is a gap in capacity, and that's what Jennifer was describing over MLK Weekend. Our network, the bands that do serve this area were overloaded 100%, leading to dropped calls, slowed data rates, and inability to get onto the network. And so that would be considered a gap. So it's no longer whether you have any signal at all, but whether you have a dominant signal and sufficient capacity in that signal to provide service. This site also provides coverage on Highway 28 for a half-mile stretch below Lake Shore Boulevard, where we're experiencing dropped calls because of a lack of service. So it's a combination of coverage and capacity, and courts have found a significant gap to exist in a two-block area of San Francisco, two deficiencies in a particular frequency band or technology where others were available. The single provider rule, that if a single provider provided service, there would be no gap, was thrown out in 2005 in that same case that I mentioned. And each carrier has the ability to provide service to the area that they're trying to serve in order to use the federal law preempt here, because it allows the carriers to use the frequencies that they've licensed from the FCC, at a cost of billions of dollars, as you might imagine. I hope that answered your question. Sorry, it was a long answer.
Yes, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right, seeing no further questions, seeing no further questions from the Commissioners for either the appellant or staff, I'm going to, I'll go to public comment. We do have public comment on this item, so Madam Clerk, will you read public comment, please?
With regard to public comment, we have voicemails, and then I have 18 emails that were received.
Okay.
Two in support of the monopole from Heidi Drum and Danielle Hughes, who happens to also have joined us via Zoom, and then in opposition, 16 emails from Mary and Russell Bishop, Joyce Bach, Jerry Olson, Jerry Lee Pope, Linda Smith, Brian Pope, June Baker, Mary Heminger, Sean Ash, Yolanda Knack, Stephen Price, Marjorie Smith, Linda Crowell, George and Sharon Valerio, Jane and Albert Duffield, and Anna Dentz.
Great, and all those emails will be placed into, our voicemails will be placed into the rec, emails, I'm sorry, will be placed into the record?
Yes, sir.
All right, and can we play the voicemails now, ma'am?
Okay, first up is Joyce Bach.
Yes, my name is Joyce Bach, B-O-C-K, and I'm calling in opposition to a Washoe County Board of Adjustments' special use permit case number WSUP 19-0006 at Verizon Monopole. I am very much opposed to them putting in a cell tower in this particular position. It may impede my view. I'm the nearest neighbor, and it's not appropriate in this particular spot. It also is adjacent to a very popular hiking trail, and people hike on it to see the beauty of Lake Tahoe and the trees and not a cell tower. I would like them to delay their decision on this until I can be better informed, so someone could show me if 45 feet, if it would affect my view. And in general, I'm opposed to it on residential property anyway. So I hope the Commissioners will take that into consideration and delay their vote until we can all be better informed. Thank you very much.
All right.
Next is Carol Buck.
My name is Carol Buck, B-U-C-K, 59 Summers Loop, Crystal Bay, Nevada. I commented for the Washoe County Commission meeting to be held tomorrow, Tuesday, June 23rd at 10 o'clock. I am against having a 45-foot cellphone tower on Tower Creek Road. It's a residential area. I don't think the tower is needed there. I'm sure they can put it somewhere less conspicuous, less near a public trail, and it just seems improper. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to my comment.
Jerry Katz.
Hello, my name is Jerry, J-E-R-R-I-E, Katz, K-A-T-Z, and I am calling to comment on the Tunnel Creek Road cellphone tower in Incline Village in Washoe County. I am opposed to its location in a residential area, and I have called before 4:00 p.m. on Monday, June 22nd, and would like to have my comment on the record. If you have questions, my phone is 570-1600. Thank you.
Marcie Ellis.
This is Marcie Ellis, but not in the position or the place that you are planning on putting it. We'd like it moved so that it does not disrupt our hiking trails. Thank you.
Jerry Pope.
Hi, this is a message for the Washoe County Commission Chambers regarding WSUP 19-0006. My name is Jerry Pope. I'm an herbal practitioner for you resident of Incline Village. I ask that you delay any consideration of SWTFN or new cellular construction approvals for six months or longer to update the city ordinance with following additional requirements. In addition to impact of the small cell facilities, we ask planning commissioners to consider and require a five-year plan, which addresses the interaction of Starlink satellite antennas, which have been approved by the U.S. government to the tune of 1 million antenna in the ground. Will the technology of today's applicants be able to lead in a year once these satellite antennas are installed? Will the applicant or the competitor come to us three months from now with a plan of cell air gig, which are small cell facilities that attach to existing telephone poles or antenna? What other technologies will litter our city with wires and boxes? Without this information and an expensive plan, our city planners are not fully equipped to do their jobs diligently and must delay any consideration of approval. The fact is, we don't need the small cell technology, and no one here wants it except the company. I submit that we have underground telecommunications utilities. Our first choice is that we request that our city ordinance is updated to require all future telecommunications utilities located underground in the form of fiber optic cables or small cable technology that we already have. Fiber optics is safer technology, which does not cause fire hazards, more secure from hacking, and is more reliable in inclement weather. It provides faster service at the top speed of light. It's a sanctuary place in Lake Tahoe. We do not need additional fire hazards that would risk obvious conditions plant life and could threaten certain species that would not be replaced for decades if ever. In 2018, our neighbor state, California, fires caused over $24 billion, at the same time an increase in temperature for 5G small cells that get installed in these areas at very high density, and plants were weakened by these wireless technologies became more frail and created terpenes, which were flammable, and increased fire hazards. I'm just saying, these items can also fall over during extreme weather conditions, unlike cables in the ground, and limit service for emergency responses. Chances that birds will build massive monitoring structures will pose serious fire risk and threaten home and wildlife. It's the responsibility of our city officials to take action for this fire hazard and the lack of emergency response. On this basis alone, we advocate a device and any other above-ground wireless applications for technology. Update the ordinance to require below-ground fiber optic cables that are safer, faster, more secure, more reliable during inclement weather, and are not fire hazards. I submit this into public record, substantial evidence that is peer-reviewed and is admissible under the Supreme Court Daubert Rule, cannot lawfully be refused, ignored, or mischaracterized as mere concern. I have expressed no concern in.
Yeah, we had a couple people signed in on Zoom.
Thank you, yes. And so I'm going to go to our Zoom now. First, I have Ms. Danielle Hughes on Zoom, so Ms. Hughes will unmute you. You'll have three minutes. Ms. Hughes, can you hear us?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me, Commissioners?
Yes, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Excellent, thank you for having me this morning. So TTD would like to formally express our support to improve technology infrastructure to 4G in Incline Village, and to encourage you to make wireless connectivity a priority. TTD recognizes that the critical need to upgrade technology infrastructure in order to communicate with the traveling public. TTD operates transit and parking systems along the SR28 corridor, and the corridor management team have continued to acknowledge that these systems are dependent on adequate communications to meet the goals and vision of the corridor management plan. Parking and traveling in the Tahoe Basin should be safe, reliable, sustainable, adaptable, convenient, giving visitors and residents the opportunity to use technology to make informed decisions on and before their trip. Furthermore, these improvements would have a positive impact on our local economy, small business owners, and to our first responders by assuring greater wireless coverage and capacity. The recent COVID-19 pandemic highlights the importance and necessity of reliable connectivity. It depends on having strong communication infrastructure. During this event, many people have lost their jobs or transitioned to working from home, and we also have connectivity issues. Having a reliable connectivity means people are able to connect to their friends, families, colleagues, and government services, such as today. Doctors are able to see their patients using FaceTime, Zoom, and other conferencing options. All of this is only possible in this area if we have robust and reliable communication network. Increasing the public safety is of special importance along the SR28 corridor. Through the use of cellular data from Air Sage Analytics, it was found that there are 95 million person trips made annually within that corridor, much of that during that peak summer season. Use along the corridor continues to grow, with shoulder parking projected to double in the next 20 years. Bikings and pedestrians also share this narrow highway space, which has led to a high rate of crashes. Reliable communications along this corridor.
Ms. Hughes, I think we've lost you. You there? All right, we'll conclude Mrs. Hughes' comments. We will go next to Graham Kent. Mr. Kent, can you hear us?
Will allow traveler nowhere and how to a recreation area with improved connectivity.
Okay. Right, Ms. Hughes, your time has expired. Thank you so much for participating today. Mr. Kent, can you hear us, please?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. The floor is yours, sir. You have three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Graham Kent. I'm director of the Nevada Seismological Laboratory and chief architect for Alert Wildfire, which started actually as Alert Tahoe in the Tahoe Basin. Fire cameras help when the fire services get on fires early. Now it's spread out throughout the entire Western U.S. and probably heading to Australia. I'm in support of more bandwidth in the basin. I grew up in South Shore. I've lived two of my years in Incline Village, very near the spot where the monopine is proposed. And with all due respect to Martin Luther King Weekend, I'm here to talk a little bit about what's going to happen if there's a fire and Chief Summers has to pull the string and evacuate people. The bandwidth in the basin is ridiculously not capable of dealing with that. We need more capacity, because the federal government has decided to use the Wireless Emergency Alerts, or WIA, and with the current situation of bandwidth in the basin, there's going to be a really hard time having people get that WIA alert, as we've seen in other locales during large wildfires. And I've experienced this myself during the Kincaid Fire and having to run around Sonoma County, helping the fire services point cameras, because everyone's bandwidth was down. Again, with respect to this project, I'm in support, and in support in large measure, to help our fire services who can also point cameras with these Verizon Wireless services, but more importantly, to get, whether you're a homeowner or a but more importantly to get, whether you're a homeowner or a tourist in the Tahoe Basin, to make sure on that bad day that if there's a WIA alert that goes out, that WIA alert actually makes it to your phone. And I wish everybody a great day, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Next, we will go to Ms. Carol Del Carlo. Ms. Del Carlo, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Commissioner Lucy.
You're welcome.
I just...
Floor is yours.
I...can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate this time, and I'm opposed to the location. I am not opposed to a new cellphone tower in Incline Village. I am a Verizon customer, and I have very poor service. I'm in that corridor close to the Hyatt, and I have a landline at home just because I have such poor cellphone coverage. And I do appreciate the safety issues that the sheriff and the medical people have expressed. If there's 19 other sites, surely we can find a site that's agreeable to our community. We live in a very, very unique and special place. I hike the Tunnel Creek Trail often, and to see that monopine, you might not think it looks bad, but it really, it's still not a tree. And if the trees around it die when you go put it in, then you're really going to have it sticking out. So all I'm saying is, let's get a tower, but let's find the other 19 locations. You must have ranked them for the best location, so let's go to the next best one, which would be number 19. So I am opposed to the location where it is. I am not opposed to a new cellphone tower. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Mr. Craig Olson. Mr. Olson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. The floor is yours, sir.
So, there's a lot of comments here about the problems it's going to cause. Joyce Bach here is saying, "It may impede my view." I was just standing there with another resident this morning. There's little chance she's going to really see it. It's not going to impede her view. I've been up to her house. I've been looking at it from down below. I've worked hard with Verizon to do everything we can to make this as unobtrusive as possible. You have Carol Buck on Summers Loop. She's all the way across the lake in Crystal Bay. She won't be able to see it unless she's got a giant telescope. It's hidden in other trees. If trees die, well, we'll plant more. I had already talked to one of the other neighbors and said, "We can certainly plant more trees around it." It is at the very start of the trailhead. It's right past my fence. It's past a open view area where people do like to take pictures. We'll not hinder upon that. Once you get past this area, there's plenty of areas to enjoy along Tunnel Creek. I live here. I love it here. I mountain bike here. I hike here. I certainly don't want anything that looks ugly either, but this is a community need. You'll see in one of the letters, someone over there said that I'm greedy. You know what? I really don't care about the money. I'm doing this for a simple reason. I need the service. We all need the service. When people are walking past us on Tunnel Creek, as well as on the East Shore Trail, I don't have service, and all I have is a cellphone with Verizon. The Board of Adjustment, Christina Hill. We had someone that spoke up and said he has no service at all in Mill Creek. He's on Verizon. Ms. Hill stated, "Well, I live in Mill Creek, and I have AT&amp;T, and my service is just fine. So I guess maybe we're all supposed to go to AT&amp;T service?" That's not correct. That's not fair, and that's not right. That's all there is to it. This is a safety issue. We need the bandwidth in here. The fire department's behind it. The Tahoe Transportation District is behind it. There's always going to be people that don't want something. It's the amazing thing of NIMBYism, not in my backyard. I like a cellphone, but I don't want a tower. You know, you just, you can't have everything. Again, the only reason why I'm allowing this on my property is because I feel that we need it. There is a portion of my property that is tourist commercial. I had Verizon go down there and look at it. Would you guys like a 120-foot-tall tower? Because that's what would take to put it in that location. And speaking to Jerry Pope, who's talking about, or, I'm sorry, Carol Del Carlo, that was talking about other locations, yes, there were 19 other locations. They wouldn't work. That's why they're looking at my location. That's why they want to put it in there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. All right, seeing no further public comment, I have no more further public comment submitted on this item. We have heard discussion from both the appellant and also the commission and staff. We've taken public comment on this time on this issue. My discussion is, is that basically the reason that this was denied at the Board of Adjustment was based upon one finding that couldn't be made, which is site suitability. Based upon my look at this, and I have assessed the Board of Adjustment's appeal or findings, I've also looked at the appellant's presentation that they were provided. I see that this does adhere to the site suitability, and I do find, I can make the finding based upon the presentation given to us to Verizon on the actual 45-foot monopole and what they have done to work on the location. So it is my, in my opinion, I'm going to make a motion to approve the appeal and reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment on approved special use case number WSUP 19-006, Verizon Monopole. And this approval is based on the Board's, my ability to make the finding required in WC Section 110.810.30 findings. So I made the motion. I'm now looking for a second.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, and now I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. Any further, seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. I have, and then all those opposed. I have Commissioner, four commissioners in affirmation and one in the opposition. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Quick note, I'd like to say to management and to staff and to the legal department, this is another thing that needs to be changed at the state level. We basically heard a presentation that told us we have absolutely zero control, planning, or development when it comes to the Federal Communications Act. This needs to stop coming to the Board of Adjustments, and it needs to stop coming to the Board of Commissioners, and they need to use their full legal right to do what they do instead of wasting our tax dollars on things that we really don't have a choice on, and that needs to be changed in state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. I appreciate that. All right, that will conclude item 21. We are on to item 22. Mr. Manager.
Yes, item 22 is a public hearing, appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial of Lifestyle Homes TND LLC's Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA2Z...I'm sorry, WRZA20-0004, Village Parkway Rezone to amend the Cold Springs Regulatory Zone map of the Cold Springs area plan by changing the regulatory zoning of plus or minus 47.19 acres, plus or minus 20.04 acres on APN 087-400-23, plus or minus 15.67 acres on APN 087-400-24, plus or minus 11.456 acres on APN 087-400-11, from medium-density suburban, MDS, three dwelling units per acre, to high-density suburban, HDS, seven dwelling units per acre, on three parcels totaling plus or minus 124.6 acres. The remaining acreage will remain general fund, general rural, plus or minus 77.41 acres. It is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners review the record and take one of the following actions, four actions. Number one, affirm the decision of the Planning Commission and deny Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA20-0004, or reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and approve Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA20-0004, as proposed by the applicant. Lifestyle Homes TND LLC has evaluated by staff in the Planning Commission staff report. Number three, reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and modify Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA20-0004, or, number four, remand Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA20-0004, back to the Planning Commission with instructions. If reversed or modified and reversed, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. This is another appeal of the Washoe, this is an appeal, but of the Washoe County Planning Commission denial of a Regulatory Zone Amendment case number. As we addressed earlier, we do have an appellant. We also, we have staff with us today. We have Dan Calalein, which is Washoe County Planner, who's overseeing this, available for questions for commissioners that may need a presentation on this item. We also have the appellant, Mr. Garrett Gordon, on Zoom with a 10-minute presentation. So before we get into that presentation, what we will do is, I would take, I want to take, is there any commissioners needing a presentation from staff? You would like a presentation from staff? Okay. So Commissioner Herman has asked for a presentation from staff. So Mr., Dan, are you on Zoom?
Dan Kalon, for the record.
Dan.
I'm available.
All right. Mr. Kalon, Commissioner Herman has asked for a brief presentation. Can you provide us some clarity in regards to the appeal, please?
Certainly. So I have presentation for WRZA20-0004 for Village Parkway Rezone. So the request is to change regulatory zoning from medium-density suburban to high-density suburban on approximately 47 acres across three parcels. And this is pre-evident here in the map. You can see the light salmon area changing over to the orange, which signifies a change from MDS, or three dwelling units, detached dwelling units per acre, to HDS, which would allow up to seven detached dwelling units per acre. Note that there is no change to any of the zoning for the general rural areas. So I've structured this presentation to follow along with the Regulatory Zone Amendment findings. So first is consistency with the master plan. This area, high-density suburban, is allowed within the Cold Springs area plan. It's also within a suburban character management area within the Cold Springs area plan. So this is consistent with the Cold Springs area plan as well as the master plan. Compatibility of land uses. The proposed change is highly compatible with the neighboring medium-density suburban zoning. It's equally compatible with the neighboring general rural zoning as the MDS zoning. And I just want to clarify here that multifamily or apartments are not allowed in either MDS or HDS zoning. So there's not going to be any apartment that would be able to go into these lots. We're looking at single-family attached or single-family detached type of housing. So third is response to change in conditions. There's an affordable housing supply shortage here in Washoe County. The Truckee Meadows Regional Plan was updated in October of 2019, which you can see here on the right-hand side. The state engineer put into effect a moratorium on developments that rely upon groundwater from Cold Springs Valley effective December of last year. However, just a caveat, this does not bar development with water imported from outside of Cold Springs, so we'll touch on that in the next slide. So, which is availability of facilities. So looking at the transportation, there are potential for traffic impacts. However, we are able to address those at tentative map stage, and we're not able to address them at the Regulatory Zone Amendment stage. So we will address any traffic impacts at the tentative map stage. Water facilities, water will be provided by Great Basin Water Company, and the intent-to-serv letter included in the application have water rights from outside of Cold Springs, so it is in compliance with the moratorium. There is community sewer available nearby, as well as sewer capacity at the sewage treatment plant. Likewise, there are adequate recreational facilities. Law and fire protection did not provide any comments on this application, and there are potentials for future capacity issues at school facilities, but not until well after 2025. Fifth, no adverse effects. So we have land use and transportation element policy 3.3, which states, "Single-family detached residential development shall be limited to a maximum of five dwelling units per acre." I've provided this table below to outline the exact change between MDS zoning and HDS zoning. So for single-family detached, we go from three dwelling units per acre to five dwelling units per acre under land use and transportation element policy 3.3. Single-family attached, we go from five dwelling units per acre to nine dwelling units per acre. What this looks like in terms of the lots on this particular site would be for detached housing, we're going from 141 lots to 235 lots. For single-family attached housing, we're going from 235 lots to 424 lots. I do want to make a note here, we are not able to impose conditions upon RZAs as Washoe County are processing these applications, so any enforcement upon these of this policy will be dealt with at the tentative map stage. And then finally, desired pattern of growth. Regional plan caps maximum density allowed within the master plan category within this area. The master plan category for the proposed change is suburban residential. High-density suburban is within the suburban residential master plan category. Therefore, the proposed regulatory zone amendment conforms to the pattern of growth. Staff sends 219 notices to affected property owners within 750 feet of the site, and I've provided all of the possible motions that are found in the staff report. I'm available for any other questions.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. All right. Now, at this time, we will allow, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Hartung or Commissioner Jung? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Hartung.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that this is another reason why our codes also, I mean, at the same time Commissioner Jung mentioned earlier, some updates. This is, we get cross because we have to do a land use change prior to seeing a tentative map, and really, everything should be all in sort of one package. So I'm hopeful that staff will give us an opportunity to make some changes in the future so that we don't see these kinds of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman.
I guess I can use this time to ask a question of the gentleman on the phone. If, would it be legal for me to ask in a motion that the appellant would be able to bring us a development agreement back to the county commission on just the 47 acres in question, and then with one of the following choices of construction? And this is due to the calls that I've received, and also, you know, the fact that the cap was not able to give feedback on this. Lots and lots of calls and letters. So these two choices, I would, you know, propose to put into a motion that they had the choice of either single-family only, 4.2 homes per acre, or single-family only, five homes per acre with 50% of the homes to be priced under $250,000. And that gives us some low-cost housing or affordable housing. So I just wanted to ask if that was a possibility to make that motion? So it would be under, basically under three, and to approve the bill and reverse the decision and add those terms in a development agreement. and add those terms in a development agreement.
Well, Commissioner Hartung, I think it was, Dan had pointed that out, I mean Herman, Commissioner Herman, I think Dan pointed that out in his presentation, that we are unable to impose any type of, any kind of restrictions unless there is a discussion on a tentative map and an agreement. That has to be brought forward, and so today, we're only considering the RZA, the amendment. Now, we can remand it back for those types of things, but we can't impose those restrictions yet. So it would have to come, and the way it's, just based upon the way it's agendized today because of the way it's proposed to us. If it came back to us with a development agreement, we could do that.
Can we ask the legalists?
Sure. Mr. Wattsviel?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wattsviel had asked, this is Edwards, Mr. Wattsviel had asked that I respond to this, this question if I could. And I'm prepared to respond. You've actually already covered the main point, which is that that can't be accomplished today precisely because of the reason you said, which is the agenda is on the zoning change. You could continue it out if the applicant were agreeable to that, could continue it out for them to work on a development agreement with staff and then bring it back before the county commission at a future date. And you could consider it at that time with an additional item, which would be the development agreement. You can't condition the zoning change on its face. You could do a development agreement in addition to that. That's a new mechanism that we've just, I think you just approved the first time the county has done that, that I'm aware of, a week or two ago, on another development where the 4.2 cap was put into place, which limits the zoning. I'll say one more thing, is that I think you can do a development agreement that would restrict the density to something less than the maximum allowed in the zone, but I don't think you could do a development agreement that would allow you to exceed the allowed density in a regulatory zone, just for that consideration, or for you to consider. So that's the way of it today. If you want to bring it back, you could do that. Otherwise, you only have the zoning change in front of you today.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Commissioner Herman, does that answer all your questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Hartung.
Mr. Edwards, if we were to do a developmental agreement, would that DA have to go back to the Planning Commission? Because as I read our statutes, it would not. It was something that we could potentially enter into with the developer, as the county commission.
Yeah, Mr. Hartung, you're correct. It does not by law need to go back to the Planning Commission for a development agreement. It could simply be continued out and brought back to the county commission to you as a board, and does not need to go back down there. You could send it down there for a recommendation or something along those lines, like was done in that last case that we just had where a similar mechanism was used, but you do not have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Edward.
You're welcome.
All right. Any further questions from staff, for staff from the commission? All right, seeing none. Do we, we do have Mr. Garrett Gordon with us?
Mr. Chairman, hello, this is Garrett Gordon for the record. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Gordon, thank you for joining us this morning. As the appellant, you are allowed 10 minutes to present this morning in regards to your case, and the floor is yours, sir.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Garrett Gordon, today representing Lifestyle Homes. Mike Raely with Christie Corporation is also on the Zoom call and is available to answer any planning specific questions. I'm going to walk through a presentation. I believe Daniel did a great job with his. Mine's a little repetitive, so I'll try to move through it fairly quickly, and then we can be available for questions. Next slide. So you can see here the existing conditions. They're vacant. As was mentioned, there's three parcels totaling 124 acres. It's within the Cold Springs area plan, and let me note, it's within the suburban character management area of the Cold Springs plan. Next slide. So before you today is only a zone change. We're not asking to amend the character statement, not asking to amend any provisions within the Cold Springs area plan whatsoever. Our request is completely supported by all findings within the Cold Springs area plan. And let me note, we appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and agree with it wholeheartedly. The existing master plan land use designation, as you can see, there's a very clear break. And I think this is, this goes to that discussion about a development agreement. We're not asking to change the rural designation of the westerly half of the property. There's a natural break there, which deals with slopes. Everything kind of west of the pink area has 15 and 30% slopes, is development constrained, which is why we're only, again, talking about the 47 acres. That is master plan suburban residential. And next slide, is zoned, as you heard, MDS. Their request, as Daniel mentioned, is a change from MDS to HDS. Again, it's allowed within the Cold Springs area plan, and the net increase, no matter if it is an attached product or a detached product, is a total of 189, excuse me, additional units. Next slide. So I focused on the findings that the planning commissioners could not make. So as Daniel mentioned, there's six findings for a zone change. Findings one and three were not referenced by the planning commission, so for all intents and purposes, number one, the application is in compliance with the master plan according to the planning commission. And number three, the planning commission's decision results in that, in fact, this is a response to changes in conditions. So I'll focus briefly on the four conditions, or the four findings, excuse me, that the planning commission couldn't make. Let me say, there wasn't a lot of specifics on the record of why they couldn't make them, but I'll do my best to go through and try to address what concerns they may have had. Next slide. So number two, the land use compatibility. I thought staff did a great job addressing a number of these findings, so I'm just going to quote right from the staff report. Page nine of the staff report says, "The proposed regulatory zone is highly compatible with the surrounding MDS regulatory zones. It does not change the current medium compatibility rating with surrounding GR regulatory zones. Staff feels there are no compatibility issues with the surrounding land uses." And second, again, on page 16, "The proposed amendment will provide for compatible adjacent land uses and will not adversely impact the public health or welfare of the surrounding property owners. The proposed change to HDS will not exacerbate any existing incompatibilities with the GR regulatory zone. Again, it's highly compatible." So we believe that HDS is compatible and also complies with all goals and policies of the Cold Springs area plan. Next slide. And I know I've used this in past presentations, and I appreciate Daniel using this as well. This is your Washoe County compatibility matrix, and you can see, based on your code, MDS, high compatibility, moving to HDS, again, high compatibility. So as far as the finding, this change is, in fact, compatible with adjacent land uses. Next slide. Another finding the planning commission couldn't make is availability of facilities, which is there are, or are planned, to be adequate transportation, recreation, utility, and other facilities to accommodate the uses and densities. Again, I'll quote right from the staff report. Number one, there are adequate recreation, water, and sewer facilities to accommodate the uses and densities. And two, RTC, Washoe, and NDOT may require a traffic study to be conducted at the tentative map review. I know they use the word "may," but as for all intents and purposes, we interpret that as "shall." We understand that when we do bring a tentative map, whatever those densities look like, whatever that product looks like, we're well-prepared to submit it in conjunction with the traffic study. So in summary, all infrastructure needs to serve a future project at HDS density is available now. Next slide. Another finding the planning commission couldn't make is the adverse impact. So it will not add, this proposed amendment will not adversely impact any other policies or action programs of Washoe County master plan. Now, this is important, in that staff identified, which we certainly agree with, that currently the LUTE, your land use and transportation element, limits single-family detached to five units per acre. So going back to my slide number two, where HDS, excuse me, MDS currently allows three per acre, this request to HDS would allow seven detached per acre, but we are capped at five. So we understand that, we're not trying to change that cap, and that is in compliance with the LUTE. And so our zone change complies with not only the Cold Springs area plan, but with this five DU cap, when we bring our tentative map forward, it also is in compliance with master plan policies. Next slide. Desired pattern of growth. That finding is that the proposed amendment will promote the desired pattern for orderly physical growth of the county and guidelines, guides development of county based on the projected population growth, with at least the annual, at least amount of natural resource impairment, and the efficient expenditure of funds for public services. This is, I always like to kind of have a favorite quote out of every staff report, and I appreciate Daniel on staff's language here. It says, "The proposed amendment allows for the efficient public expenditure on municipal water and sewer services, and the proposed density is allowed under the regional plan." So this is very efficient as far as public expenditure, water, sewer, transportation, it's in compliance with the suburban character management area, it's an allowed land use of, excuse me, zone, regulatory zone in the Cold Springs area plan, and again, has the highest compatibility rating assigned by Washoe County. So we believe that the planning commission aired in not making findings two, four, five, and six, and in fact, this application, as supported by staff, does meet all the relevant requirements. Next slide. So this is always important, to try to clear up a couple rumors out there of what lifestyle may or may not be doing. Number one, this is a rezone that will allow 330 single-family detached or 424 attached, again, an increase of 189. There are some literature and social media posts that we're looking at almost 2,000 units, not true. There's also discussion about apartments or condos. Those are not, not only are we saying on the record, we're not building those, but they're not allowed per development code. Again, there was discussion of, are we trying to get density transfers or build on the GR? That came up the planning commission. The answer is no. There's no ridgeline, your hillside areas are proposed. And finally, one of the planning commissioners mentioned that the fire station was over, I think the quote was a mile away, if not miles away. That's not the case. We have a fire station a half mile from the site. Next slide. So again, zoning considerations. Cold Springs area plan has not been updated nearly 10 years. There's a strong demand for housing. It's certainly in proximity to regional employment centers. Woodland Village, which I think we can all agree is a gem, in Washoe County is nearing full buildout, so lifestyle is looking forward to continuing that product on this project. There is, as staff mentioned, availability of infrastructure, including water. There's currently lack of housing diversity in Cold Springs, so this will increase that diversity of the product. And again, a majority of the Cold Springs is developed with common open space, which is comparable in terms of lots. So again, back to that compatibility discussion. Next slide. The land use or master plan considerations. There is infrastructure needed to serve a future site, it's already in place. Washoe County School District has no immediate concerns. The zoning is consistent with Cold Springs area plan. HDS is allowed within the area plan and the suburban residential master plan designation. HDS is consistent with permitted uses in Cold Springs area plan. And again, no change in zoning is proposed in the hillside areas. And the last slide, again, focused on the Cold Springs area plan, just some quotes. The area plan envisions a balanced and diverse community that offers a range of lifestyles. Essentially, all of Cold Springs right now is MDS, so this will provide such needed diversity. Area plan calls for a range of housing opportunities. This will contribute to that range. All regulatory zones.
Mr. Gordon.
HDS. Oh, yes, sir? Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Your 10 minutes have expired, sir, so if you could submit your comments, sir.
No problem. I got one more slide, but I will close my, my here, my, close my presentation, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, tell me again, what's, I don't want to know density, what's the, what's the total number of dwelling units that you guys are asking for?
It would result in, again, for the record, Garrett Gordon, Commissioner Hartung, thank you for the question. So it would go from three units per acre to essentially five units per acre for single-family because of the LUTE, which is an increase of 94 units. And for the attached product, it would be an increase of 189 units.
What's the total number of units, Mr. Gordon? That's what I'm asking.
Okay. The total number of units for attached would be approximately 423, and the total number for detached with the LUTE cap would be approximately 235.
Okay, that's, that's what I had. I had 424 and 235. Okay. That's, that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for now. That's, those are my questions.
Okay. All right. I have no other commissioner signed in at this time for questions for Mr. Gordon, so at this time, I'm going to go to public comment. Madam Clerk, with public comment, you have received emails, both, have you received emails both in opposition and in support of this issue?
Mr. Chair, I have received 21 emails in opposition and none in support.
Okay. Can you read the names of those individuals that have been, have issued emails in support, I mean, in opposition of this, of this issue, please?
Certainly. Michael and Tanya Taylor, Susan Wyler, Joel Egbert Palmer, Karen Silva, Matthew and Carrie Martin, Marilyn Whitney, James and Carmen Jones, Christian Kelly Villa Verde, Newt, Danielle Reiner, Missy Best, Yvonne Munoz, Mary Ann Cudoodie, Shane Cudoodie, Diane Merrill, Sean and Stacy Deenan, Rebecca, Emily Peca, Richard and Crystal Jacobson, Jacob Palmer, Green and Cantonio families. And that's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And all those emails in opposition of this item will be placed on the record and placed into the minutes. We do have voicemails, so we'll have those voicemails played now. Madam Clerk.
First up is Valerie Miller.
Hi, my name is Valerie Miller. The meeting is for 10:00 AM Tuesday, June 23rd. Case number WRZA 20-0004. I'm calling to say we do not want a high-density zoning area. For one, our freeways don't even support the amount of people we have out here. If we have a fire, we only have two on-ramps, so it would be a nightmare. The schools are overcrowded to begin with. Our water, we don't have the water to support it. And the sewer system, if we have condos, we'd not support it also. So I am definitely against having condos. Thank you.
Alejandro Munoz Jr.
Hi, this is Alejandro Munoz Jr., and I'm calling to oppose case number WRZA 20-0004. Again, I oppose. Thank you.
Shannon Melrose.
Hi, my name is Shannon Monticelli Melrose. I'm leaving comment for case number WRZA 20-0004. I'm calling again because I'm sickened by the way Lifestyle Home just keeps going and doesn't respond to the community speaking and regarding about building in the small area. There are several reasons, traffic, crime, wildlife, fires. I've already submitted my email in the last hearing, and... and I'm still really disgusted that they just keep pushing. They just don't stop. So everything's still there. The traffic is a major concern, crime, wildlife, fires. I would like to see this not go through to the board again. Please don't let this pass. Thank you.
Next, we have someone who's identified here as a Cold Springs resident, so I assume we don't have a name.
This is for Planning Commission. I am a resident up here, and I have lived here for 40 years, and I definitely do not want any more building out here. Right now, the back road is, is all we have left. And my yard faces where you want to put your little buildings, and I'm totally opposed of it. There's already too much, way too much traffic and, and fire danger for the hills, it's on a hillside. And, I mean, it's just too many people already. We do not need more traffic. It sounds like a freeway from my yard as it is. I've lived out here forever, and it's just getting too much. Please do not. I am totally against any more building in this area. Thank you. Bye.
Christina Munoz.
Hello, my name is Christina Munoz, property owner at 17800 Brushland Drive, Reno, Nevada, 89508. I'm calling to oppose the reverse decision for Lifestyle Homes. Again, I'm calling to oppose case number WRZA20-0004. Again, I oppose case number WRZA20-0004.
Next is Tracy Monticelli.
My name is Tracy Monticelli. I'm referencing case number WRZA200004 about the Cold Springs condominium. This is a really, really bad idea due to the small area that we live in, our BLM land, which we all like to have access to, and there being not enough, wide enough highway for all the commuters in the morning, as well as very few services. Please do not build this project. Thank you.
Sheila Silva.
Hi, my name is Sheila Silva, and I am leaving a message, a general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020 in regards to the Cold Springs rezoning agenda. I think it is WRZA20-0004, where they were denied to have their density changed to a high density. I am calling in favor of keeping that denial in place and not allowing Lifestyle Homes to change their density to seven units per acre. The community really cannot take on any more of this traffic and population growth in an area that has no in and out, only has the one entrance up and over the hill to get two Cold Springs and then one or two exits off of the freeway. That's the only current paved roads in and out of our community. We do not have public transportation that comes out here, and it is not expected to come out here for at least 15 years, from what I understand. We just do not have the availability to support high-density housing. We don't have the amenities, the fire protection, the sheriff and Reno PD protection. And in general, it would be really against what planning should happen. So for safety, security, everything, water, traffic, the whole nine yards, I would really urge you to consider not voting for the Cold Springs high-density and leaving the option on the table as not approved. Thank you. Have a great day.
Wenke Build.
Hello, this message is for the Planning Commission. I'm calling about case number WRZA20-004 regarding the Village Parkway rezone. First of all, my neighbor told me about this case this morning. I live in the Cold Springs Valley, and I'm very surprised that I never received any notification about this case to begin with. I understand now that an appeal is being filed. I simply want to go on record as saying that I'm extremely opposed to the idea of increasing the density on Village Parkway, especially for the building of an apartment development. My name is Venka Build. First name spelled W E N as in Nancy, C K E. Last name is Build, B as in boy, I L D as in David.
Deborah Newell.
Hi, yes, my name is Deborah Newell, and I'm calling in regards to case number WRZA20-004 in regards to the Village Parkway rezone for the 124 acres being approved for apartment building. I've been a homeowner out here in Woodland Village in Lifestyle Homes for over 13 years, and I strongly, strongly, strongly oppose that going in. So I would like to voice my opinion that absolutely not, well, I will not support that. Case number again is WRZA20-0004, and that is in regards to the Village Parkway rezone. My name again is Deborah Newell. The phone number is 775-677-0312. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Daniel Cox.
Hi, this is Dan Cox, and I am calling in regards to the commission meeting today on Lifestyle Homes in Cold Springs. Case number WRZA20-0004. I vote no on that. Thank you. Bye.
That was the end of the voicemails, Mr. Chair. I think we have one person on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We, I believe we have Dayla Gibson on Zoom. Ms. Gibson, do you, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. The floor is yours, Ms. Gibson.
Excellent. My name is Dayla Gibson, and I'm a resident in Cold Springs. I reached out to all the commissioners to discuss this issue, and I was able to speak to two of you. I left messages for two of you, and one of you, your mailbox is full. My estimate of the house is a little over, so I apologize in my message. Commissioner Herman represents this district. She knows her constituents don't want this change. I understand on paper and with staff, this is approved and looks good. When does the community have a say in our area? When does our opinion count? We can't stop the development of the land. We understand that. But shouldn't we have a say in how crowded it's going to be? And I understand, you know, from the presentation, it said that there, nothing will be exacerbated, no issues. But that is absolutely not true. Many issues will be exacerbated out here if this zoning change is approved. As our community successfully presented to the Washoe County Planning Commission, the area where the zoning request is being made makes no sense for the arguments presented for the change. We're the furthest valley from Reno. There are affordable housing options being built in places where it makes sense, such as Instead, South Reno, and so forth. We have no resources to add high-density building out here. I understand they'll pipe in the water, but our water resources are depleted. Our schools have some of the highest and often the highest student-teacher ratios in the country, or county. Nancy Gomes has a 26 to 1 student-teacher ratio. And in the middle school, we have 35 to 36 to 1 in essential classes. That's pretty bad. I understand we have a fire department here. It is great. I've used it when we've, we've had issues in our neighborhood. However, it's still a small department. And if it goes out on one or two calls at the same time, there's no coverage except volunteer firefighters. Our traffic is horrendous. Instead's building, North Stone Gate have finished building. Our, it's a parking lot during normal times. It is a parking lot, and if you want to get to town, it's ridiculous. We aren't arguing against development. We're asking you to uphold the planning commission's decision to deny the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
And, Mr. Chair, we got a late email from one, the person that dropped off Zoom, from Darlene Gibson. She's against the proposal, but I'll just print it and put it on the record.
Great, thank you. All right. So we've seen a further public comment. We'll bring it back to the board for further discussion on this item. We have had opportunity to hear from the public, and both staff and the appellant. At this time, I am looking for a motion or some direction from the other commissioners. Commissioner Herman.
Here I am. Thank you. I, when I look at these choices in order to get where we need, the people need to be that live in Cold Springs, I would have to move to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission. Or I would do, move to remand the application directly to, back to the Planning Commission. And then we would have to add instructions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I should make this a motion to move to remand the application, Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA20-0004 to the Planning Commission with the instructions of reducing, somehow reducing that. Like I say, I don't understand. If they can do it, we can't. So to bring back a development agreement and put a single family and, and for no more than five homes per acre.
Okay. So to just clarify your motion, your motion is to remand the appeal back to the Planning Commission with your instructions to bring forth a development agreement based upon, with your, with your options available, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Commissioner, I'm not seeing a second on this item. At this time, that motion would fail without, without a second. So the motion fails with.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harton.
Sorry, I, I literally lost power, but we're back up now, so I apologize. I didn't, I didn't hear all of Commissioner Herman's comments.
Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Herman's comments were, she made a motion to remand the RZA appeal back to the Planning Commission with the instructions to bring forward a development agreement and condition the development agreement to have no less, no more than five units per, five, five dwelling units per acre in that, in that unit. Is that correct, Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Okay. That was her motion, Commissioner. There is no second, there is no second for that on the, currently on that.
Can I, can I ask staff a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman?
By all means.
So, Dan, are you still on?
I'm still here, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So we've got 235 dwelling units and then 424 for a total of 659. Am I correct with that?
No, it's one or the other.
Oh, it's one, okay, okay, okay.
So it's either 235 units for single-family detached, so your normal house, or it's 424 units for single-family attached, such as townhomes, just townhomes, really.
Okay, okay. Are, are those considered the same as condos?
Not necessarily. Condos would be breaking it up. Typically, when we have an attached housing product, it's attached. So condo might split it up within the building. Attached housing would be something that would be.
Commissioner?
Attached with its specific lot for each one.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I, I'm still trying to figure out, because the staff report says seven dwelling units per acre, but they've come up with 424, which is nine dwelling units per acre.
Yes, under Washoe County Code, we allow up to nine dwelling units per acre for attached housing under HDS, as well as five dwelling units per acre for attached housing in MDS.
Okay, so, all right, Mr. Gordon, so which, which is it? What, what are you asking for? Are you asking for 424? Or are you asking for a total of the, the seven, which is listed in the, which is listed in the staff report? Forgive me. Which, what are you asking for? I'm confused, and I don't mean to be confused, and I'm, I'm trying to just figure this out here.
Yeah, thank you for the question, for the record, Garrett Gordon. So we're asking for, you know, a zone change from MDS to HDS, which would result in either a detached product up to 235 units, or, and this is again, HDS. We can't really pick and choose, you know, the densities that it comes with. We're just kind of stuck with HDS. HDS comes with nine attached dwelling units per acre for an additional 189. So we'd have the option, as Daniel said, under HDS for attached or detached.
Commissioner Harton, Dan Cologne, for the record, I have the definition for multifamily, and it includes condominium developments, just to clarify that.
Okay, okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. So that, so back to the first motion that was prepared, did not get a second and died on the floor for it to be remanded back. At this time, based upon the discussion, now, I have one quick question from two staff for clarification here. There will be, so based upon the planning or the Cold Springs area plan, no apartments or condos are allowed, correct?
Within that zoning, both HDS and MDS zoning do not allow multifamily development.
Okay.
That's within code, so Article 302.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, I'm now looking for another motion at this time. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. I move to approve the appeal and reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and approve Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA20-0004, Village Parkway rezone. The approval is based on the following findings that the proposed regulatory, number two, the compatible land uses, the proposed regulatory zone is highly compatible with the surrounding MDS regulatory zones, and it does not change the current medium compatibility rating with surrounding GR regulatory zones as preferred by, as recommended by staff. And also of, number four, availability of facilities. There are adequate recreation, water, and sewer facilities to accommodate the use and densities permitted, and RTC in Washoe and NDOT are going to look at a, probably look at a required traffic study, which will give further explanation to this. Additionally, under number five, no adverse effects. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation and action programs of the Washoe County Master Plan. LUT 3.3 limits single-family detached residential dwellings to five units per acre. The proposed regulatory zone amendment would increase the single-family detached residential density to seven dwellings units per acre. And staff again has determined that that works. And number six, desired pattern of growth. The proposed amendments allow for efficient public expenditure on municipal water and sewer services, and the proposed density is allowed under the regional plan.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion for approval.
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. And again, I'm truly not trying to be pedantic here. So HDS allows for up to nine dwelling units per acre. They're saying seven units on the staff report. So, you know, we ran into this last month, or maybe the month before, they get muddled for me sadly, about, about, you know, what, what are they real, what are you guys really asking for, Mr. Gordon? I don't, I'm still, I'm still vexed. How many dwelling units do you want? It's, it's not an either or. Tell me, tell me what the applicant really wants. What are the, what are you going to bring us back? Because it's, it's unclear to me whether it's 235 or 424.
Well, Commissioner, Commissioner, it's, we've kind of moved past that. We can't do questions of that.
All right.
So it's discussion, it's discussion, so.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I've got a motion on the floor and a second to reverse the decision of the planning commission and approve the appeal. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay? I'm sorry. I have, I have two, I have two in the opposition and three in the affirmation. Please affirm your votes on the screen. I heard Commissioner Jung in the affirmation and Commissioner Hartung in the opposition. The motion carries three to two with Commissioner Harmon and Commissioner Hartung being in opposition. All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 1:15. We have three short, or three, hopefully three short items remainder. What would be the preference? Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, we're still in our public hearing. We're on to 23, please, sir.
I think Madam Clerk will handle number 23.
Yes, yes, she will. Thank you, sir.
Item number 23 is a first reading and adoption of an ordinance as if an emergency exists. So if introduced and adopted, it will bear bill number 1843 and ordinance number 1653. An ordinance authorizing issuance of the Washoe County Nevada general obligation limited tax Nevada shared radio system bonds, additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2020, in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $15 million for the purpose of financing building projects, providing the form, terms, conditions of the bonds and other details in connection therewith and adopting it as if an emergency now exists.
All right, so this is a first reading and adoption of the ordinance. So for the, for the bonds, for the P25 radio system. At this time, do we have public comment, being this is a public hearing?
I have no one signed in, obviously, no emails.
No voicemails. Do we have any via Zoom? We're seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move to adopt an ordinance number 1653, authorizing the issuance of the Washoe County Nevada general obligation limited tax Nevada shared radio system bonds, which are additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2020, to acquire and construct improved and equip building projects as defined in NRS 244A.019 within the county.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second, second from Commissioner Hartung. I have a motion from Madam Vice Chair, second from Commissioner Hartung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, I believe so.
Please affirm your votes. Yes, motion does carry unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Dave Watzvial. For whatever reason, the last part of the motion wasn't addressed. The part with providing the form, terms and conditions of the bonds and other details and connections therewith and adopting it as if an emergency now exists. Was the intent of Commissioner Burke big to include that language as well in her motion?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Secondary agrees.
Motion and secondary agree both that that did exist in the motion. Okay.
And the reason, the reason I'm asking the question is because this is for the issuance of bonds and there are some strict requirements. And I just want to make sure we've got dot the i's and cross the t's.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All right. We're on to item 24. This is an introduction and first reading for an ordinance, amending chapter, code chapter 70. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an introduction and first reading. This will be bill number 1844. An ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 70, Vehicles and Traffic by adding a definition for non-commissioned deputy by updating the traffic control committee to replace references to the Director of Public Works with the Director of Community Services Department and by amending a provision related to categories of personnel who may issue citations for illegally parked vehicles.
All right, looking. All right, we, bill 1844 has now been introduced for a second reading to be.
Oh, second, I'm sorry. And the second reading will be.
July 14th, 2020.
Thank you. All right, so the bill has now been introduced and the second reading will be on July 14th, 2020. All right, we are on to item 25. This is a public hearing and possible action. Mr. Manager.
Item 25 is a public hearing and possible action to consider a report of each property delinquent on its utility charges through January 21st, 2020, and continue to be delinquent as of May 19th, 2020, and the amount of each property's delinquency along with any objections to the report. And number two, after considering the report and any objections to it, determine whether to adopt the report and correspondingly adopt Resolution 20-044 to collect certain delinquent utility charges on the tax roll.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, being this is a public hearing, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
I have no emails. I'm not aware of any voicemails and we're not getting a signal about anyone being on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion at this time. I, as long as there's no further discussion on this, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam, Madam Vice Chair.
I, there's, so there's two motions here. I move to hold, we did hold the public hearing and consider the report of the delinquent property on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency along with any objections to the report, which we did not receive. Any objections to the report?
No.
Of course, yes, because I have no documentation showing that. So I move to approve the report as received and acknowledge that we did hold a public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to acknowledge we had a public hearing. I'll second that, that motion. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. We do have a second motion. So Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, the second motion is to adopt the report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency and corresponding Resolution 20-044 that the certain delinquent utility charges be collected on the tax roll.
All right, I have a motion. I'll second the second. I'll be the secondor, second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right, we did call for public comment on that item and there was no public comment. And so we are on. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us this morning. At this time, we're on to item 26. There is no need for a possible closed session today for labor. And we will, so we will move past 26 today. We are on to item 27, our final public comment of the day.
Item 27 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call public comment, please?
Certainly. First up is a voicemail from Sarah.
Hi, my name is Sarah and I'm, I'm leaving a comment, a general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. Basically, I just wanted to make a comment on the suspension of the bargaining contract and more specifically, the suspension of the upcoming COLA. It just seems that from looking at the fiscal year 21 budget that without taking money from the employees, the hardworking employees in the county, that the county would still have an infant balance of $42 million. But if they took that money from us, we'll have an infant balance of $48 million, which $5 million definitely run a lot. And then seeing the things, if you're looking at that kind of reserve, it's not really that much. And you could be helping out the employees that are running the county and also contributing back into their, their own community. But I guess $42 million, you know, it's not bad, but I guess it's not good enough for the county. So instead, even the employees with their entitled to, it just appears that the employees are just going to keep going to pad the budget just in case the worst case scenario happens. Even though this budget, it appears was kind of created with the worst case scenario in mind during the time when the pandemic was occurring. But instead of saving sugar points for, okay, what to do next? Let's wait for this and then we can move forward. Instead, they just fill in the organs of all and saying, nope, we'll just take this money and you guys are out of luck. So that would be nice if the employees were given what they are entitled to, since many of the employees were working during the pandemic and a lot of people are trying to get back from the heat after the whole thing happened. And it seems like it's just adding insult to injury to take money from people just to add a couple more million dollars to an already pretty significant reserve that you're sitting on. Thank you.
Michelle Glot McCullisich. It'd be interesting to hear how she says that.
My name is Michelle Glot McCullisich and I'm leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. I would like the board to reconsider the suspension of the Washoe County Employee Association's collective bargaining agreement to stop the 2.5% COLA and vacation buyout that is effective July 1st, 2020. I have served the county for 15 years and have been a longtime Washoe County resident, taxpayer and voter. I do not feel that taking back something that was negotiated prior to this national pandemic is the right thing to do. My immediate family has been fortunate enough not to have felt the economic effects of layoffs. However, my extended family and colleagues have either spouses or partner or other household earners being laid off. I understand the county's budgetary needs to be financially sound. However, it appears that the county should still have $48 million in the bank without the employees giving up $5 million of our already negotiated COLA. I understand the county has announced they will receive $20 million for the pandemic response. This should free up some of the reserves that might be considered in the general fund. Please consider a majority of WCA workforce was able to support essential workers during this time, even though our duties were considered non-essential. It is important to know that stimulating our economy is essential for recovery. However, there is a lot more that needs to be done and doing it by taking something away that was already negotiated is not the best option. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Paula Valentin and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. I am concerned that the board is considering suspension of the multi-year contract as I fear it may end up being an abolishment. If our economy turns around, any decision should be flexible and the fiscal year 21 portion should be retained. How does the board know what the future holds? Cost of living increase may sound like the ideal way to fix the county shortfall of funds. But what if higher government steps in and covers these increased costs? Would you not take advantage of that and return COLAs to the employees? If the contract is suspended, it should be suspended across all collective bargaining agreements. It is not fair that some opt out when this is being posed as an across-the-board solution like it has been done in the past and not to name names. But I am grateful to have a job, but other people in my household have not been as lucky. It may be a long time before they can regain employment. They depend on my salary and COLAs to cover our expenses. The economy has definitely been affected and this also means higher prices for utilities, services and products, i.e. cost of living increases. I am concerned with employees being able to pay for those increases without a COLA. We are still catching up from the salary cuts in 2009. What else has been researched to cover these additional costs, i.e. dropping services, putting CIP projects on hold, et cetera? Does it really make sense to put the burden of the employees faced with cost of living increases that will far exceed the 2.5% proposed for us? Why does balancing the budget come at the expense of workers who have been working through the entire pandemic? Some of us have been on the front lines from the beginning and working to keep others safe while putting themselves at risk. I just want, hope that you guys are flexible enough to look at other options and if things change in the economy, that you would revisit this and not just abolish the contract. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Maria Trotter.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Trotter and I would like this message to be read aloud as a general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting June 23rd, 2020. I would like to address the proposal to BCC to suspend our collective bargaining agreements and to stop the 2.5% COLA. I am a dedicated employee of the county and love the community I serve. The county offered a stable income, cost of living increases to keep up with the economy and benefits at retirement. The WCEA has provided many concessions to the county to stabilize our benefits. But the current proposal has indeed crossed the line. To start, the county's own fiscal year 21 budget has projected a, an ending fund balance of $48 million and that balance includes taking $5 million directly from the county employees. If the BCC does not cut the COLA, it still leaves the county with a projected $43 million ending balance, which is indeed a surplus. Furthermore, after the budget was adopted and well after the county decided to take away our COLA, it was announced that they would receive $20 million for pandemic response. Despite this large and unexpected infusion of cash, management still wants our COLA. While this money can only be used for pandemic response, it will free up $20 million from the general fund that would be used for pandemic response, which can now be used for wages and other operating expenses. Management has even asked the county departments to adjust their budgets on the front desk side's personnel. I believe all departments have in fact made recommendations on how to cut costs without taking from their employees who loyally serve this community. Why have these recommendations not been proposed? To take money from those who help generate funds for this surplus is completely unfair and to ask for pay cuts from these same hardworking employees is in fact devastating. I am requesting the funds originally dedicated to the pandemic be used in lieu of taking the hard earned wages and benefits from the essential county employees. Thank you.
Brian Bass.
Hi, my name is Brian Bass and I'm leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. Regarding Washoe County management's desire to suspend employees' collective bargaining agreement to eliminate agreed-upon cost of living wages for employees and vacation buyout from going into effect on July 1st. Folks, this is about much more than just money. It's about trust, transparency and a social contract. A social contract between county management and employees. and a social contract, a social contract between county management and employees, an agreement, an agreement made where both management and employees said, we trust you each to hold up this agreement and to keep your word and to remain true and transparent about your actions, to not hide intentions of facts. Regardless, however, it appears that management did not hold up their end of this social contract. At a Board of County Commissioners meeting, management neglected to mention to commissioners their intent to take away this cost of living increase and vacation buyout from employees. They knew it at the time. They just apparently decided it was something the commissioners didn't need to know about. Well, that's not transparency, and that's not trust, and it's not right. Management informed employees that they will need to sacrifice $5 million of their wages. Without it, there will only be a $43 million fund balance on June 30th. With the employees' sacrifice, however, there will be a $48 million fund balance. Apparently, $43 million isn't enough, but $48 million is, though any explanation as to why this is is not materialized. And then after the budget was adopted and well after the county had asked the employees to sacrifice, it was announced by Governor Sisolak that the county will receive $20 million for pandemic response. Make no mistake here, this $20 million, which is coming from the county, will absolutely free up $20 million from the general fund that would have been used for pandemic response, which can now be used for wages. Now, a rational person would think, well, now that solves the employee sacrifice of $5 million, but that didn't happen. No, the county still needs $5 million employee sacrifice. So now the county's new song is $63 million is not enough. We need $68 million fund balance. Enough. Come on, folks, let's get back to trust and transparency.
All right.
Deanna or Dania?
Hi, my name is Dania, and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. I'm calling in regards to the way that you guys are handling our current budget crisis. I would like to express my disapproval on the way that this is currently being handled. In the grand scheme of things, taking $5 million away from your employees that have been working very hard during all of this, when the total budget is $48 million, is kind of ridiculous. The $5 million seems like something that you guys won't even notice is missing in a total that large, yet it makes a very, very, very large difference to the employees, especially when we have all been working incredibly hard during this very difficult time. Some of us losing half of our incomes for our spouses that have been laid off during this pandemic response, so we are really depending on these COLAs. COLAs are very important for us as our cost of living is still increasing. Most of us have not seen any type of decrease in our actual cost of living expenses. Yet again, we've been seeing decreases in our household incomes due to layoffs and such. So overall, I think it is quite ridiculous that this is the way that you guys want to treat your employees, and I would appreciate if this was reevaluated. Thank you.
Leanna Gload.
Hi, my name is Leanna Gload, and I'm leaving this message for the general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. The agenda item is about the taking the COLA from the Washoe County employees. I agree with the WCEA and feel the action to cut the COLA for Washoe County employees is unnecessary. It is my understanding that the county's own fiscal year 21 budget leaves them with $48 million ending fund balance after taking $5 million directly from employees. If they did not take the COLA, they would be left with $43 million. $5 million doesn't seem, $5 million seems like a drop in the bucket to the county, but a gouge to employees, especially since the cost of living in the county continues to rise by at least 2% each year, and the county continues to stall, giving this cost of living increase, which is essential just to survive here, especially given spouses have lost their jobs, as well as other family pressures of time for kids at home and ill family members. So now the cost of living here has surpassed what your employees need and deserve. This is the time that you should be protecting your employees and keeping them happy, not stripping them of their benefits. If you're going to talk about cuts with your unions that want to also see cuts at the top, trim the fat there first, please. The county manager makes way too much money right now. All of the county's budgeting is based on the worst-case scenario, which was calculated while the entire economy was shut down. I feel like these cuts are opportunistic, taking advantage of a bad situation. The county will likely receive more money for COVID relief, and budgets can be shifted to protect these employees' benefits. Please don't succumb to pressures of panic and political silliness. These employees saw this county through shelter in place and will be here when COVID disappears. Be here for these employees now. Thank you for your time.
Maria Tokars.
Hello, my name is Maria Tokars, and I am leaving this general public comment for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting on June 23rd, 2020. It's regarding the 2.5% COLA and vacation buyout suspension. I just wanted to address this matter. As an employee of Washoe County for 15 years, we, the county employees, are understanding of the realities of the COVID-19 crisis and the economic concerns. However, giving what is essential for the county employees over to the reserves makes zero sense to most of us, and in fact, going back on an agreement that gave us security could cause the trust we have in you to be broken and damaged. This has been very difficult for our families, and we've all been struggling, myself especially. Washoe County employees are also people supporting our local economy, and we, as employees, have shouldered enough of the burden during this unprecedented time, losing loved ones, medical bills, job loss, layoffs. This is just some of our burdens that we've been experiencing. It appears the very people counted on to be available during the crisis, the essential, are now being asked to shoulder yet another penalty or burden at one of the worst times to ask even more from all of us who are already experiencing too much. We, as employees and community members, have been dealing with fear, panic, uncertainty, stress, depression, pressure, and so much more. Now the one safety, the one thing we could count on, the one light at the end of the tunnel that we've been looking towards to help us financially is now being, you know, put out, and we're having to take this on our shoulders as an unwarranted fiscal reason, especially in light of the $20 million received to the county for this pandemic. I would just like to say that please don't punish the very people you've been able to depend on during this crisis. Please show us we can also depend on you. You have some tough decisions to make, but this one is pretty easy. Thank you for your consideration and hearing my comment, and thank you for your reliability to help us, the Washoe County employees, as we have been reliably helping you all along during this crisis. Thank you so much.
Jim Ganyan.
Good morning. My name is Jim Ganyan. My phone number is seven seven five nine seven four two four zero nine one. This is in regards to the BCC meeting today, June 23rd, regarding the matter of the suspension of the WCA employees' COLA. Again, my name is Jim Ganyan. I'm an honorably retired Captain Deputy Sheriff from the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I've been made aware of your proposal to suspend the COLA clause for current employees in Washoe County. My understanding is that your current budget is doing very well despite this pandemic. As for my, as for me, employees, I am aware that many of the county employers, employees are hardworking professionals who come to work every day and serve the public well. I think you are doing a great disservice to your employees, especially since there is a major need to stimulate this current economy within Washoe County. I urge you, the Board of County Commissioners, to reconsider and rethink this matter of suspending the COLA for WCEA employees and come to some sort of agreement with the WCEA. Again, this is for the board meeting today regarding the suspension of COLA for WCEA employees. And my name is Jim Ganyan, seven seven five seven four two four zero nine one. Thank you.
Our final public comment this morning is an email from Beth Dory. Dear Commissioners, I've contacted all of you to request the commission to mandate the public to don mask, excuse me, to don masks.
Madam Clerk, why don't you start it?
Thank you. Dear Commissioners, I've contacted all of you to request the commission to mandate the public to don masks when social distancing is not possible and inside buildings. This request has fallen on deaf ears. While all of you are here now safely in your bunker with no plans to reopen up these meetings to the public, you are leaving your duty to protect us to a $15 an hour clerk to ask patrons to don a mask. The commission's position is to strongly encourage the public to wear masks. Strongly encouraging is the pretty please approach to governing. Pretty please didn't work with secondhand smoke or drunk driving, and it will not work with masks. The Washoe County complex opened to the public on 6/11. It not only, and not only does the public upon entering must wear a mask, they also must submit to having their temperature taken. The rationale for the requirement, according to your Washoe County Twitter post, is to protect the staff. It's heartwarming to see that the commission only sees the health benefit for universal masking when it applies only to them. Legally, how can you mandate the public to wear a mask in your building when you, as a commission, have not legally mandated masking? Consider this. When my masked 92-year-old father goes into CVS to obtain needed drugs, and there are many patrons in the store without masks, buying their fever reducers, thermometers, and cough medicine, his health and life are at risk. If by a very small chance he needs to enter your complex, he will be safe. Best regards, Beth Dory.
All right. And I believe we have a comment via Zoom. We have Stephen via Zoom. Stephen, you've been unmuted. You have three minutes, sir. Please, can you state your name for the record?
Thank you. My name is Stephen Edgcombe. I've been a resident for Reno, Nevada, my whole life, born and raised. I just, I wanted to comment on a lot of the development which has happened over the decades. I think it should be done much better, and there really should be better organization and the traffic and all the issues in Cold Springs should really be taken into consideration before that project is carried out. Also, this is a tough time with COVID-19, and the, I think the benefits given, or the stimulus given by the federal government can be used more effectively to other private sector workers who have much, not as beneficial benefits as many of the county workers, and have much lower wages and things like that. That's all I'd like to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Seeing no further public comment either from voicemail, email, or Zoom, we will conclude public comment. And at that, we are, we're to file 28, which is our commissioners and county managers' announcements. Mr. Manager, is there anything you have?
Nothing further.
Nothing further. Commissioner Hartung?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Jung?
No, thank you.
Commissioner, I'm not seeing anything from Commissioner Herman or the vice chair. So with that, we will conclude the meeting, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.